All right, welcome to the Concord Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 23rd. Thank you all for joining and we have a an agenda tonight that we want to work through efficiently. The first, oh, first, since we're virtual, let me take a roll call for the board. Andrew.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Linda.
Here.
Kate.
Yeah.
And this is Burton Flint. I am here and we are short two members tonight, so. Or Kristen may be joining us shortly. The first item that we are going to be discussing tonight is the potential scenic roads general bylaw discussion, which is being under consideration by the Historical Commission and I'm just looking. Who do we have that will be presenting on, I believe, somebody presenting it from the Historical Commission, right?
So I believe Joanne Gibson.
Joanne Gibson, okay.
Is going to make a short presentation, but I would remind everybody unless you're presenting or to leave your video off and your mics muted, please.
Thank you for that reminder, Elizabeth. Joanne, if you could introduce yourself and as well as state your address and then please take it from there. And we have had the opportunity to review your, your, your memo on this. So thank you for that.
So I won't, I won't read it. I promise. Joanne Gibson, 88 Walden Street. And I'm here to ask the planning board to consider passage of the scenic roads bylaw or the support for it. And on November 10th, I appeared before the Historical Commission and described the bylaw to them and since their chairman Melissa Saulfield is out of town, she's asked me to fill in even though I'm not a member of the Historical Commission. But following my remarks, Michael Capisi of the Historic Commission will say a few words also.
Okay.
Um, I just said that you've all read the memo from me and Elise Woodward and People Brown. And it, as you know, it outlines the bylaw, doesn't outlaw the bylaw. And, and the history of the, but it's worth reiterating that the scenic roads bylaw was first presented back in 1973. I mean, the enabling legislation was passed. And that many of our town plans have urged that we adopted or some kind of a roads policy for the town of Concord. Just something that would protect our scenic roads. I'm presently, and this is a very important point, the only modification of an historic road is within the jurisdiction of the Concord Public Works. And a public hearing is not required should they care to in any way change the roadway unless a public shade tree is involved, but there's no protection for the stone walls. So we've been flying blind here for quite a few years. And more than 113 Massachusetts towns have adopted the scenic roads bylaw, including all of our contiguous towns, Acton, Bedford, Carlisle, Lincoln and Sudbury. And we've, we've got the strange situation where River Road, for instance, is protected in Carlisle. Their stone walls are all protected. They come into Monument Street and ours can, anything can happen to them. So I think it's, it's pretty important that is being good neighbors that they get the, that we, we follow what our neighbors have done and that's only example of one road. Um. And each town has its own criteria for a designating a scenic road and, and that's something that, that that differs tremendously from one to one, from one to the other. I particularly think Carlisle is very good. And Sudbury is also good. Often the criteria includes looking at a map and figuring out which roads were the very oldest where they were laid out. And we even at one point were going to just have roads that had been laid out before the revolution. I think we've expanded a bit beyond that. Because there are a lot of roads that are still very vulnerable. So what we have decided for now, but it is not decided because we need to do more research, we need to involve people who really know what they're talking about and, and, and we have a good team of people who are going to be doing some research and we're checking with library, et cetera. But what we have in alphabetical order for now, and as I say, this is not definite. It's Balls Hill Road, Barrett's Mill Road, from Lowell Road to College Road. A portion of Esther Brook Road, Garfield Road, Liberty Street, Monument Street, O Road to Nine Acre Corner, south of Route 2. Strawberry Hill Road, Sudbury Road, south of Route 2, and Westford Grove. And the, the, the list can be added to at any time in a year. Um, I wonder if we could see the slides. So I'll just show you some pictures of, of some of the roads that we have.
Elizabeth, would it be possible for you to project as Gibson signs?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. These are a couple of the maps, a little hard to read it from this size, but we will have more definitive and this is a 1775. And then there's an 1830, I believe, right after it. Okay. And then, then these are just examples of roads that are scenic. This is Barrett's Mill. As is this. And then we have Esther Brook Road, the next three or four sides. That's also Esther Brook. As is this one. Then we go to the mat also. And then here's Garfield Row, which is just filled with stone walls. I've never seen so many stone walls. All right. And then we go down here still, those are Garfield Stone Walls. I recognize them anywhere. And then down to Liberty Street. And Monument Street. The next two, I think are Monument. And then note, stone walls are everywhere. And then that's still Monument. Okay, Sudbury Road, we don't see now a picture of a stone wall, but there are some, not as many. And then finally Balls Hill Road, which also has stone walls and mature trees. Okay. Um. Thank you, Elizabeth. You, you wonder what, this, I just have two more paragraphs. I'll go quickly. Do you wonder what store qualities have been lost in the last 50 years when we didn't have this and we could have had it spy law? And this will be the first opportunity to vote in town meeting that we've ever had. This has never come up before town meeting. It's never been officially in any way gotten out into the light. And so we hope that the planning board and the Historical Commission will, will co-sponsor the scenic roads bylaw at the 2022 annual town meeting. And I think it's the best way we could celebrate the 250th anniversary of Revelation by giving Concord and the whole country a present of our landscape. Um, thank you. And after Michael Capisi speaks, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, John. Michael.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak before the planning board and certainly thank Joanne for all the hard work she's put into this. After Joanne's presentation, on November 10th, the, the commission did take a straw vote because we didn't have any bylaw in front of us to vote on formally to support this and certainly ask the planning board to co-sponsor a scenic road bylaw with us as we see that as a integral way of getting this accomplished in town. I will say, since that meeting, on my own, I reached out to about 15 communities across the state from Berkshire County here that have a scenic road bylaw. And I asked them, I explained that I'm a member of the commission. I'm just doing some research. I wanted to understand what the scenic road bylaw meant to them. And each of those communities had two responses, although we discussed many things. A, that they felt that the scenic road bylaw was an integral part of their efforts to sustain the historic inventory infrastructure in their community. And more importantly, they were either surprised or shocked that the town of, that the Concord did not have a scenic road bylaw in place already. So we are hopeful that the planning board will see the significance of this, the relevance of this, the importance of this. Because there are many roads in Concord that are very scenic. That are not under the auspices of any control. And certainly there are walls that have been up for several hundred years that we certainly would love to be stay preserved for the next hundred years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And just so we've got it, Michael, could you just stick your full name and address for the minutes?
Sure. My name is Michael Capisi. I live at 11 Wood Street, Concord, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. So my, Joanne and Michael, I have a couple of questions and forgive me as I ran short on time and getting prepared for reviewing all of the material for this meeting. So if some of this is covered, please point that out to me. The support that the Historical Commission is looking for and you, Joanne, from the planning board right now is to be in support of a, a, a scenic road bylaw. Do we have a draft of what that bylaw is?
Well, the, the bylaw per se was, is chapter 40, 15C. And I mean, that's the.
That's the general law under which.
But you don't, there's not, there's not been a by, a warrant article written yet.
Okay. And, and so we'll, we'll have presumably Historic Commission is, will be putting together a warrant article with the actual language of the bylaw that would be adopted. And I don't know if that would be a, that would be a general bylaw provision, Elizabeth, or zoning. Okay. So that would be a general bylaw provision. And as part of that, it is the idea that we're, we're creating the mechanism by which roads can be designated through some sort of public process. And that's to come later, but first what we need to do is put in place the, the bylaw that allows for the designation and appoints the planning board a, a role in, in that. Is that correct?
Yes, because planning board has to do the hearing for any, any violations or applications to the.
So Burton, the, the actual general bylaw will specify which roads are being designated as a scenic road.
Okay.
And it takes, it takes an active town meeting to add or subtract from that list.
Okay. So there could be roads that would be designated when this goes to town meeting. That is a, a list that the Historic Commission would, would be developing. Is that correct? That, that's outside the scope of tonight's meeting here is, I guess.
Yes, that is outside the scope of tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
Night is just whether the planning board supports moving forward with the drafting of a scenic roads bylaw and and creating and submitting a warrant article.
Right. Okay. And so, Joanne and Michael, I guess what you're looking for us to this evening is as a consensus of, of the board or that whether we'd be in support of it or not. And then there would be a process going forward, working with Historic Commission presumably to provide input on the article and so forth.
Yes, but, yes, but we would also like the planning board to co-sponsor a, the bylaw once it's drafted with us in order to gain the support of the town of Concord and certainly the.
Okay.
The Historical Commission, I think, would be the one speaking.
Okay.
Nelson is also here from the Historical Commission.
Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Nancy Nelson, 1695 Low Road, a member of the Historical Commission. Echoing what Michael had said about the support of the Historical Commission and the desire to have the planning board at some point co-sponsor.
Okay. Now, I, I don't know in my time on the planning board, I certainly, I mean, certainly not this year is about what it means or what's involved in co-sponsoring. I certainly, we've previously spoken either in favor or neutral, or neutral on another art, an article being moved by a committee. Maybe Elizabeth, do you want to, can you educate me on the finer points of town meeting rules around co-sponsoring and what that means?
I, I don't, there's no specific laws or guidelines regarding, you know, two boards or committees co-sponsoring a warrant article.
So it's more of a strong statement of support that we are, we are, we are co-sponsoring in a sense that we are, are, we'd like to see it moved forward. But, but the Historical Commission would be, would be tasked with a presentation.
Correct.
And with respect to public hearings between now and when whatever town meeting roads were added to a list, would those be Historic Commission? I was a little confused because I thought we, in, first we passed the bylaw. Are any roads designated in the initial passage? Or is that then, once the bylaws pass, there's a, there's in the procedure established for designating them?
No. So I have not procedurally confirmed, you know, with town council how, how this works, but I believe how it works is the, the question is whether the town has to adopt, first adopt the enabling legislation that allows you to implement a scenic roads bylaw. If, if the town has to adopt that enabling legislation, that would be one order, one warrant article. If that were to pass, then you would move to a second warrant article, which would be the actual general bylaw. And within that general bylaw, it would list, you know, the reasons for the bylaw, the roads that are being designated, what the procedure was for public hearings in front of the planning board and the and, and what, you know, if there's different criteria and, and those types of items.
Okay. Elizabeth, you stopped, I think it's probably on my end, but I lost the connection for a little bit there.
Yes.
Or was that for everybody? I don't know.
No, it was just your video.
Okay. All right. I seem to be having some glitches with my town broadband tonight. Okay. So, but there would be a, a public process after that. I, I think at this with, with respect to designating any particular roads. So I think at this juncture, and I'd like to, I will do a, let's do a vote of the board. If in the, well, actually at this juncture, let me ask, do any other board members have questions or comments, concerns? Yes, Linda.
I have a question with regard to the tree removal issue. Would that just be for on the removal of trees in the right of way or would it extend to people's property?
So yeah, under the scenic roads bylaw, that governs the trees within the road right of way and the stone walls. So what will happen if there is trees in the road right of way that somebody is proposing to be removed? There would be a joint public hearing between the planning board and the tree warden. The town has also adopted the public shade tree enabling legislation and the town has a bylaw regarding public shade trees. So there would be a joint public hearing for those tree removals on private property from the wall inward. The only protection is, are those trees within the setbacks that meet the requirements of the tree preservation bylaw.
So if the Department of Public Works saw a need to remove a tree.
That would, that, that's how, that's part of the actual language in the bylaw that the town would be, you know, reviewing and whether that would be an exemption or not. So that most scenic road bylaws from other communities, there's exemptions for dangerous or hazard trees. Those don't require, you know, public hearings. But if the town were to be proposing, Public Works was proposing road work that was on a designated scenic road that required the removal of a portion of a stone wall, then they would have to also go through the planning board process for a public hearing. Unless the bylaw is written such that Public Works projects are exempt. So that's, that's all things to be discussed when the bylaw is being drafted.
Thank you.
I think it's great.
Any, any other questions from any members of the board comments? Okay. Well, what I would, I'll go ahead and make a, a motion and that we, we support the Historic Commission in creating a scenic bylaw, scenic roads bylaw. And, and I think we'll see a little bit more over the coming weeks, what exactly that entails in terms of reviewing the content of the bylaw. But in principle, support that for presentation to town meeting. Elizabeth, is that, am I, am I kind of hitting it about where we, where we need to be for now?
Or that's just where you need to be for now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So let me go around and go ahead and take a vote on that. So I'll start with Haley.
Yes.
Excuse me, Burton.
Yes, Nancy.
Please.
Oh, I'm, of course. Gosh, thank you for keeping me straight, Nancy. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second. Yeah.
Okay. Andrew or Haley, one of them, Nancy. Thanks. Okay. Let me restart that vote. Haley.
Yes.
Linda.
Um, yes, so I qualify by saying that I'm uncertain. Yes, in principle, but I, I think the focus on what streets and being able to have the public have adequate comment on each street and, and review of them, I think is, is very important to me. And I would perhaps consider that if at all possible, that you could bifurcate the approval of the bylaw from the designation of all of the streets within the bylaw. That's my comment. But yes, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. And I want to come back to that when we finish the vote, but let's, next I'll go to Kate.
Yes.
And Andrew.
Yes.
All right. I think that's everybody on the board here tonight. Linda, to your point, I think it's an excellent comments and points and for Joanne, Michael, Nancy. You know, I, I think there's a lot of wisdom in that and, and separating out from the enabling bylaw, any designation of particular streets, it certainly should be a two-step process. And I second Linda's comment about the, any designation of any particular street should follow a, follow a public process, which I, I would assume needs to be following the, the implementation of, of the bylaw process, but I defer to town council and, and the, and the text of the bylaw on that.
Excuse me, Burton. I didn't get what your vote was on that, please.
I mean, yes, Nancy, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I've, I've had a long day, Nancy. Thank you. Okay. With, with that, I think what we can do is move to the second item on our agenda. Which is the Thorough Depot Business District Draft Zoning Discussion and a continuation of, of, of the discussion we've had at prior meetings. I want to try to be focused in our discussion tonight. We have the public forum coming up in a couple of weeks where we will have the opportunity to present the, the draft bylaws and our, our talking points to the, to members of the public and, and receive their feedback. And tonight I, I'd like to try to avoid so much. I, you know, trying to pull in all that feedback tonight. I, what I want to do is make sure we're prepared for the public forum. And we, we received a, a version of the draft bylaw. I think we should start there and go through. And I'd like to just get a consensus because there's been a few things in response to public feedback that have been changing over time of where we, where we are, what it looks like now. And if we've got the majority of the board in support of those items and we can really sort of, we're not finalizing it, but get it in presented so that we, we are, it's ready for presentation at that public forum. Elizabeth, to that end, well, let me ask the board, is everybody good with that approach? Give me another. Yeah. If, if you have a concern, of course, speak up at any time. Elizabeth, would you like to put up on the screen your, your bylaw draft from earlier today? Okay. Well, I, I actually think it would be useful to go through this and to refresh ourselves to go through the whole thing. But I don't want the, this, this principal use regulations. I mean, we went through this and we assigned yeses and nos. The important thing to, to understand is when we're looking at this, that there's a new column here establishing what uses may are appropriate for the thorough business, the thorough depot business district. And it's being removed from the column immediately to its left. So it's got its own categories. And I think that the gist of that is that we primarily removed some allowable uses or applied special permit requirements in a few limited cases. Did anybody have on the board have any further comments or reconsiderations of the, of the specific items, line items in that table? I think we've been through it a couple of times and it hasn't been particularly contentious.
I guess I just had a question about the combined business and residence and maybe just tying it back to like, I know this was started before the MBTA Communities Act thing came out and, but I know we're trying to meet that requirement with this is as my high level understanding, but can, I guess, can somebody just remind me like what, what was needed in here by right to like meet that requirement? And is it, is that why like a combined business residence is a yes here rather than a special permit?
Elizabeth, can you, you take that question? I, I don't recall a specific discussion about how this table ties to that.
So the, the it's always been a yes. It, it hasn't changed. A combined business residence has, well, I'm not going to say always, but when it was adopted for, you know, all of the business districts, it is a yes. If you, if you met the, the criteria that's in the bylaw, the residential units have to be part of the same building, open spaces, twice the gross floor area of residential units. And then I can't remember the other existing one. And it was only, I think, a couple of years ago, town meeting passed an amendment to that bylaw that said with, you can get reduction in the open space requirement and reduction in the parking. And I can't remember the, the third one, by special permit through the Board of Appeals. But it's always been a yes. It's never been a by special permit.
Haley, I, I think that the changes we've made to this table, we're not so much to reflect in, with respect to this table, to reflect the, the, the MBTA Communities Act. I mean, really, essentially, I think what we did was we took industrial uses out and the dealer, the car dealerships and boat dealerships and so forth out. But otherwise, the table essentially remained the same, right? Those in 4.6, these industrial uses are effectively going from a yes to a no. So storage yards and manufacturing packaging and so forth. Elizabeth, if you want to continue scrolling down.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
I, I'm sorry. Whenever I really look at things, I'm afraid I always see new things or things I, I missed on them. And, and here we, we have permitted a cemetery. And I guess it, just thinking about that, perhaps, perhaps we should only permit that by special purpose or a permit or perhaps even a no, because it seems somewhat contrary to the.
Vibrancy of the.
Yes, that's the word I was searching for, that we are hoping to introduce to this part of town. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that's probably one of those things we sort of glossed over because nobody was thinking that ever a cemetery would be established in, in the Thorough Depot Business District. I, I, and to that point, I, I don't particularly care one way or the other, but I'd be happy to change it. It lets quickly, I can't see everybody's head now. So if you're on the board and you oppose if you're against prohibiting cemeteries in the business district, please speak up. And I just note that Kristen has also joined the call, maybe earlier, but I'm just noticing now. So does anybody have? Maybe earlier, but I'm just noticing now. So does anybody have opposed to changing that from the yes to a no for cemeteries? Okay. Elizabeth, I'm going to guess that cemeteries, we we don't run into issues with cemeteries that we might have with prohibiting a religious use if it's a religious cemetery.
No, it, I mean, if it's a religious use, it's
It's allowed otherwise.
It's allowed otherwise.
Okay.
Got a different definition.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I I'm scrolling down on my local copy, I think that the next thing that brings us to is dimensional regulations and again, just to so everybody knows how this is working and for people who are new to this issue or joining us for the first time. There's existing dimensional regulations and what we're doing is creating special dimensional regulations by amending section 6.1 of the the bylaw, which covers dimensional regulations and and referring instead to 7.11, which is essentially a all in one bylaw provision, which which covers all the elements of the Thorough Depot Business District. And as we get to those dimensional changes, we'll highlight each one. So then that brings to 7.6 Elizabeth, the the parking and loading regulations. So that's also being amended to say that for the Thorough Depot, refer to 711. So that's that's the sign that we are changing some parking requirements for the Thorough Depot. Now within the 711, we've got the purpose, I don't think we've we've have any outstanding comments on this. Essentially, this is encapsulating the very much what the the envision 2030 plan directed. The planning board actions to take with respect to the Thorough Depot Business District and why we've been engaged in this process for the last two years.
It just Haley and I have been, well, mostly Haley, have been having a conversation with the new sustainability director, which I don't know when you go from being new to not being new, but since it's only been three weeks, I still consider her new. And we are talking about just a couple of you know, just minor changes to emphasize some sustainability a little bit more in this section. So that'll be presented to the board.
Excellent.
The the meeting after the 14th.
Okay, thank you very much Haley and and I I would just say, I guess if if it's being presented at a meeting after the 14th, if you're if you have sort of a general idea of if people have questions about that at the public forum, if we can put those on you. That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think, I mean, I know we don't talk a lot about it because it's kind of nicely worded in here and we just kind of go, you know, through it and we don't need to talk about it tonight, but I do think it's important that we kind of reiterate these specific points of the purpose on the 14th, because it's it's what people kind of keep moving away from with kind of the concerns that we're hearing. So I think it would be good to come back to that purpose at that meeting.
I think that's a great idea and Kristen, while I I haven't had the chance to really dedicate a lot of thought to that. I think that I'm thinking right along the same lines that that the purpose and 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 just going through the the why and what our goals are, I think it's really important. So Elizabeth, if you want to keep going down to lot standards, I think that's where we first start to see changes. So the first thing is the things that jump out to me is that we're distinguishing between primary and secondary streets, effectively, we're distinguishing between Sudbury Road and and Thorough Street and 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 that has important implications in terms of some of the requirements in terms of front setbacks and the like. Then so for front yard setbacks, where a front yard setback is greater than zero feet, the following standard shall apply. This is where we really get into some of the the design elements, talking about front spaces effectively, if you if you read this, the inverse of this is you can't have parking spaces in front. The idea is that you have a public space, a community space, seating, tables and the like. You can you can set back, you can get a special permit to set back further than the the 10 foot setback. But the still parking is not in the front. Does anybody have any comments on on the front yard setback language or requirements?
So Burton, I will I will point out that when you talk about the setbacks. So it's, you know, 12 feet for a primary street, so that would be, you know, Sudbury and you know, zero for a secondary street. So I just want that currently, there's no front back, there's no front yard setback for the Thorough Depot District. So it's not 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 every building will have a public space in front, but
Right.
Every building will not have parking in the front.
Right, thank you. You stated that much more succinctly than I and 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 while you've got that table, if you go back down a little bit, the the idea that the setback is is a on on Sudbury Road is a minimum of what was it 10 feet and a maximum or minimum of 12 feet, a maximum of 20 feet. So the idea being you're creating a boulevard. You a a larger open street than the Thorough Street. But the buildings are not set back 50 feet. Except by special permit and and even in that case, no parking out front. Okay. Otherwise, there are no changes in the setback. I mean, you highlighted the change that currently there is no setback requirement. That would remain the same for Thorough, I I guess. When you say there's no setback requirement, there's also no maximum allowed, right? There's simply
Correct, there's no minimum, there's no maximum for front yard. And the side and rear setback is currently 10 feet and it's staying 10 feet.
Okay.
And and further down unless it's there's different provisions for a combined business residence. If they want to exceed the height, there's a special permit process.
Okay, thank you. That that 10 feet, if a budding or residential, the rear setback of butts of residential district. Today, what what is is there that 10 foot and five feet of which must be landscaped or what what is it today?
It's the same.
Okay, so that's not changing. Thank you very much. All right. Now, the building design standards, so this is an entirely new element that we are including building and design standards except for the the dimensional standards. Where we have seemed to be coming out here, the the key thing that we've gotten the most input on is on building height, a great deal of concern about it. There was talk about increasing it to 38 feet and then this concept came in about a pitched roof versus not a pitched roof and where that gets you. And we received drawings from the from the building inspector that showed how it currently a pitched roof is measured from the center of the hypotenuse of the pitched portion of the roof. And that means you can actually have about a 45 foot roof currently today and through Depot Business District and we heard, but we heard a lot of concern about allowing a 38 foot flat roof building. What we have now, and I'd like to, this is the first item I'd like to know if we have consensus on, because I think we haven't really established this is we're actually not increasing the flat roof requirement, we're keeping it exactly as it is today, we're actually effectively lowering the height of a pitched roof, because most pitched roofs, that would be measured on the center line of the middle of the roof. If they were, that 35 foot center line would lead to a ridge that was higher than 38 feet. My view on doing this is, we heard a lot of concern from residents that it would be a higher roof line and and concern there, we we heard from the the professional planner that that would allow more flexibility in design, I think, but I think it's prudent to go with this, so effectively lowering what's currently allowed today. Can I ask, is anybody on the board have comments or concerns about this approach?
I mean, I I think it's, I think it's a good approach, I think it's addressing some of the concerns that we're hearing. And by improving the proposed designs of what could happen versus what could happen now, so you know, in the concerns that we're hearing in terms of building height and towering over neighboring neighboring residences, I think that we are actually making an improvement there and I hope that's acknowledged.
Okay, all right, any any other, thank you for that, Kristen. Any any other comments on this? And we will talk about the special permit element to height in just a second. Okay, let's go ahead and and turn to that while we're on height. So we can, there is this provision that the planning board may grant a special permit to allow for 40 foot flat roof or 45 foot pitched roof building, so five feet taller for a flat roof. Or what is that eight feet, sorry, seven feet taller for a pitched roof. But these are not, the the it must meet specific requirements, not the whim of the planning board and granting the special permit. It must be setback from a public right of way by no less than 100 feet. So obviously, right there, we've just looked at the setback. The 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 maximum front yard setback requirements, one of these buildings cannot be the first building seen from the from a from the public right of way by by definition. The second is that in order to exceed the maximum allowable height that's otherwise allowed. One or more buildings of no less than 34 feet must occupy a substantial portion of the frontage to help screen the taller building. So that's not to say it needs to block it entirely. You know, part of that is would be determined by the maximum width of the building that can be on the public way and part of it would be determined by the the dimensional requirements for being set set. How much room could be between buildings to see a lot taller building, but it this would provide a screening for the taller building. And the I think probably most importantly, this tall taller building allowable by special permit up to 40 feet would need to be 125 feet off of residential district. This last one, it says if if it's a setback where where there's a recession in the profile of the building, so on and so forth. This is another thing to essentially require that the building steps steps up to that height. The effect of all of these three things or four things together means that you could only go to you could only grant a 40, a special permit to go to 40 feet or a 45 foot pitched roof. Within essentially the middle of the large lots located on Sudbury Road or on the primary street. Then that has been an element, I think, of what has been recommended to this board by by the town consultant and and probably in large part to ensure that you can build a full height grocery store underneath two floors of housing or or other large commercial floor where you might have taller floors. That's the rationale. Given the prior dimensional requirements where we're saying 35 feet and 38 feet, is it, does anybody have any concerns or comments on this special permit allowance? Elizabeth.
So just as I commented on the other, currently in the zone just for combined business residence, this is what 13B comm Ave did. You, they can get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals to allow a height of up to 40 feet. So currently, what that means is for a flat roof, it's 40 feet. For a pitched roof, it's it's the mean between the plate and the ridge. So if you have a 60 foot and I will be posting the graphics that the building commissioner did. It's the public information officer took his handwritten and turned the graphic into a really nice graphic. So what that means is if you have a pitched roof that's a 10, 12 pitch for a 60 foot wide building, the ridge is actually 35 feet at the mean is actually a 47 foot tall building currently. So if somebody went with a pitched roof for 40 feet, the top of the pitch would be what, five, five more, five more feet?
Yeah, somewhere in the 50s, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, it would be in the 50s.
And and you said that's that is, did you say a special permit or a variance from the ZBA?
Uh, it's a special permit.
Okay, so so using using the same standard of review as we've got here, though, would be the planning board. You're saying today, somebody could build a substantially taller building and they could build it anywhere in the Thorough Depot Business District, not just in these areas that did a we're delineating that with 100 feet from the the public way and 125 feet from residential. Is that correct?
Well, if if the if the Board of Appeals makes the
Right.
special permit findings.
Okay, so I think then the gist of this is that we are substantially restricting the areas where you could go to the height that's allowed today. And in fact, we're even further lowering it in the case of a pitched roof from a potential height based upon some geometry of close to 50 feet down to a maximum of 45 feet within the discretion of the planning board. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. That's a great point, Elizabeth. I think the we've got these these drawings showing the front and rear setbacks. We've got the design standards, Elizabeth, anything, I think. Sorry, I'm catching up on my local copy here as I scroll through. Okay, I think the next thing that we should focus on, Elizabeth, you've got it highlighted in yellow is 71144. So our starting point is that any, and and this is probably the biggest gating item to meeting the MBTA Communities Act is that and it makes building multi or combined business residential in the district today unlikely to happen because of the affordable housing requirement of 20% for any multifamily housing that's over four units, right? Is it is it starting with a fifth unit, Elizabeth, today? It's four, it's five and up, you need 20% affordable?
No, I think it says for four or more.
Four or more, okay, so four or more is is 20% affordable. So what we're looking at is and we've discussed at length is what would be appropriate to modify that to make it more likely that you might have residential built within reason here. And it was very, if I didn't say it at the prior meeting, it was very interesting. And Linda and I forgetting who else was there, the comments that were at the affordable housing meeting that we attended about what should be the the baseline here. And Linda, do you recall those comments? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I but we were
On the spot and I I don't recall if there was a magic number that and anyone offered.
Well, yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't a a formal recommendation or anything, but it was just part of the discussion when I mentioned that we were looking at providing relief from requirements for building affordable if they if somebody was meeting other goal town goals that we might go lower and and the comment from somebody who I know has been really involved and a very strong advocate for affordable housing was they thought it should be 10%, that should be the threshold, because that would result in more affordable housing actually getting built. Like, I think was their logic, I don't want to go too far and put words in their mouth. What we're looking at here is creating a so changing it so that we you only need 10% up to 10 units, right? So from five to 10 units, 10% would need to be affordable. And then for for greater than 10 units. We'd say 20% must be affordable housing, but that, let's see, how do how do we have this written here now? One space up to two bedroom. Oh, so Elizabeth, we don't currently have language in here yet about creating relief from those requirements, right?
So the relief from those requirements is not till you get down to here as an incentive.
Yeah, let's jump down there then and and I'm sorry.
Before before you jump, this language regarding the type of affordable housing at 80% of the area median income or that comes straight from the PRD section. So it's it's not anything new, it's something that's already in the zoning bylaw under the PRD section.
Okay, and and the reason for that language is is I I know sometimes in other contexts, we've talked about capital A affordable versus affordable and which which categories are count towards our 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 count for affordable housing in terms of meeting the requirements of chapter 40B.
Anything that's 80% AMI or lower.
Okay. So so what we're doing here is if you're building one affordable unit, if essentially if you're if you're build a 10 unit residential development, one will be if you're building one affordable unit, if essentially if you're if you're build a ten unit residential development, one will be an eighty percent AMI and that will count towards our affordable housing inventory. And if you are building, uh let's say twenty units and you say you're building two units of affordable. Uh well, actually, excuse me, um what that that if you're building, let's see, is it if you up to twenty units, would that mean you're building four units? Uh yeah, you'd be building four units of affordable, two of those would be eighty percent AMI and count towards our inventory. And two would be sort of lowercase affordable, right? Meaning intended to address the missing metal, but not account towards our our inventory.
Correct.
You guys like that formula for this? What that would what that would produce, Linda, I feel you.
I'm not, I'm I'm not sure. I mean, I think that what would then happen is you end up with a bunch of studio apartments. It and uh at this level, it's really affordable in terms of worker housing, but so you're meeting some goals, you you're certainly not meeting any goals in terms of diversity or 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 really um you know, uh uh lower income housing um that that you're um integrating into this um development. So, you know, get you, it gets you um somewhere certainly, but I'm I'm not sure if if you don't have any description of what kind of units and um you leave it at eighty and then certainly up to a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifty. You know, I think it's useful and I certainly think it it's seems to me that that it's viable. So if you want to get some more moderate income housing built, maybe this is the way to go, but you shouldn't have higher expectations for it.
Yeah, um I excellent points, Linda. I I think, well, first of all, Elizabeth, can we talk about the point Linda raised about quick, we we measure by units, not by um you know, square footage or something like that. Um so what would prevent somebody from building five bedroom ha- uh apartments and then a studio and that counting as a as a unit?
I mean, I Elizabeth, you might answer that, but I I it doesn't seem like that's what we've seen in the past. It seems like what we've seen in the past is consistent size or, you know, more than one type of unit like one, two and three bedroom units, but nothing that's just specifically to address the need. I mean, I I want to, I want to be careful of being too prescriptive here.
I I think it's true, though, that you, I mean, I can tell you of recent developments is is it, I it was the planning board considered, but I was not part of the consideration because I was uh in a butter. Um but the the affordable unit, there's two affordable units being built and they are essentially studios. And so that's the result, yeah.
Um so to address, you know, Linda's point, and I think it's a valid point. You can, you know, you can add um that the affordable unit shall be a mixture of you know, a mixture of, you know, the number of bedrooms. I mean, you could, you could say from studios to, you know, a three bedroom. Um I I mean, I think that's.
Could you say that they'll be in proportion of the units developed? So that if there's if there's five three bedrooms and you're saying it's twenty percent, then or however many then at least one of the three bedrooms has to be affordable, you know, could you do that? I know it's probably complicated from a drafting perspective, but.
Uh well, you can, you can, you can propose anything. Um it's uh it's it comes down to the, like you said, how, you know, how complicated does it make it to implement? So, you know, if if the requirement is just, you know,
And and this is.
They be a mixture.
It for Burton's experience, that was a condo development, right? Not a rental development.
That's correct.
It had, is it the experience with the rental developments that they're they're doing the same thing? They're effectively having smaller units that are affordable or is it just more?
No, so so for combined business residence, um you know, since I've been back in Concord, you know, there's Concord Outfitters and both those were the same, um thirteen B com av, you know, all of them are the same. Um so there there hasn't been, you know, and both of those are rental, but not not the scale that you're, you know, that you're thinking. Something like Concord Muse, you know, that's a comprehensive permit and that that goes through a whole different special permit process and um the state law requires them to be, you know, a mixture. So, you know, the requirement that there be a mixture isn't anything new.
I I wonder, I I mean, in considering this, I I I'm inclined to say, let's follow what's been done for the PRD. I think we've seen the limitations of the zoning code as a vehicle for creating new units i- in terms of um you know, as opposed to the funding mechanisms that that are well outside our purview. Um the I our goal here is to help facilitate the actual creation here. And I think to the degree we put additional requirements around it, that may make, that may be counterproductive.
But no, I I will say like in the PRD that it does require um it does require a mixture.
Yeah, exactly.
And and it and it's and it isn't there language in there about it needs to be essentially um you know, I I want to say the affordable units need to be interspersed with the market and 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 that they need to be of similar character uh uh design.
So it's under diversity of dwelling units. And you know, that it's a mix of diverse housing opportunities shall be provided in all PRDs, such diversity shall consist of the following mix, the number of bedrooms available, the price or rental rates of the units and two of the three styles of units, single family, two family or multifamily. So you can, you could, you could put in a new, you know, a new section that says, you know, a mix of diverse housing opportunities shall be provided.
So perhaps if there's greater than two or four, if there's two or more affordable units created, there will be a mix of 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 um hu- uh housing types provided.
And yes, and the number with the number of bedrooms available or something like that.
Linda, does that good sort of go to to towards meeting some of your concerns? If if we said that there needs to be some diversity, so we don't just get four studios as you point out?
No, I I I think it would be worthwhile.
Yeah, I mean, I I understand concern Burton about not wanting to be too prescriptive, but like, we also don't want to get this wrong. Um we are, we generally take the posture of like, oh, we don't want to be overly prescriptive, but then like we end up not getting what we want. Um so this doesn't seem like that big of a a thing to add here.
Okay, uh yeah, great point, Haley. Yeah, Elizabeth, if if we could sort of mimic then what's in the PRD, but I think specifically, you know, you talk about a diversity of units, if you've got two or more required. And in terms of the, you know, occupancy or however we define that.
Okay.
Great. Um and thank you for bringing us back to that. Now, we seven one one four five, I I wanted to jump to the the relief from the ha- housing, but you should, okay, we'll go there. Great, great. So we talked about, you know, based upon a little feedback we've gotten from from the board and and from members of the public, we've talked about commuter parking. And what can we do to improve the current situation of of having this parking, which is is subject to a special, you know, that that are provided, subject to a special permit? Um uh to if if somebody else was coming in and and redeveloping the lot where the building that is, the the development was subject to that special permit, where they they could do something else. Um I want to emphasize that if they put in something that didn't require the same special permit as before, the current, the the property owner could could remove the commuter parking, that wouldn't be a requirement, that would be going through a site plan review probably in its own sake. And maybe would they'd need another special permit, but um the idea here being that we could create an incentive to reduce the affordable housing requirement if they provided a certain amount of parking um that would be provided for commuter parking. Uh we've talked about this in principle. Um I mean, people, thi- thi- this idea that it would step down to fifteen percent is um or or that, you know, these these other pieces reduce the amount of required parking, reduce the amount of required open space, people have feedback on this. I think, you know, the gist of this is, is we're talking about a project that with with more than twenty residential units, right? And knowing the the uh the the lot sizes in Thero Depot uh business district, we're really talking about the the large parcels on Sudbury are the only lots would support the development that of that size that would meet the dimensional requirements, that would meet the parking requirements. We've reme- meet the open space requirements, et cetera. And it would be a development of that size where you would see enough units that it would make financial sense that they they could provide, you know, this large number of commuter parking spaces. At least fifty parking spaces for commuter parking and a developer would have to pencil out whether um it made more sense for to to build additional affordable units or it it would make more sense to build these parking spaces, but this would be the incentive.
I I have a question on this. Um and that would be, if I were building twenty units, then how many parking spaces would be required in that development?
If they were two bed, all twen- two bedrooms, you would be required to have, what I think that's thirty parking spaces. One and a half spaces, up to two bedrooms.
One. So one space or or one or up to two bedrooms and two spaces for three or more bedrooms. Um but you, so but you can't, so you can't calculate what the parking would be because you don't know what the commercial uses will be and that will also drive parking.
And and two respects.
But but could I argue that um that should be in in my count? So for example, could I argue that if I have um I don't know, ten three bedroom units or no, I guess it's it's twenty units or more. So if I had well, the requirement say for thirty units, whatever, and I could argue that um the commuter parking would really only be necessary between you know, I don't know, seven and and four or seven and six and that really my thirty units should count in that in that total um for commuter parking, even though it's going to be used um in the evening for my residence. I mean, I how how many incremental spaces are we asking? And I I know you can't calculate it exactly, but would would that um switch off, be accepted or not in terms of what a planning board looking into the future would would be calculating?
So I think we've got two different methods of providing some relief. So one of which is that's sort of time of use, if if there is a, which is allowed today, if there was um a business parking and residential parking that the they there may be complimentary, right? So you have, you have people parked during the day for the business and parked at night for the residential. I think what we're talking about here is creating commuter spaces, which are not part of a shared pool. Elizabeth, is is that what you intended in putting this together?
Um that's, that's what was initially, yeah, discussed. So so currently the zoning bylaw allows somebody to um get a special permit for shared parking. Um and this draft bylaw also allows by special permit, shared parking. Um it's, it's a little bit, it's it's more prescriptive in in what the the town is looking for as far as, you know, shared parking and um you know, sets a limit on it and, you know, the, you know, the design of it, so uh it's the 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 current zoning bylaw does not have all of these elements as part of the shared parking. Um so it it's allowed by special permit now and it's being proposed that way. Um this section down here is um is something different, speaking solely to commuter parking.
So could you, could you amend this and say projects with more than twenty residential units that provide at least fifty parking spaces for commuter parking parenthesis ex- excluding any shared spaces?
Um so I don't, I don't necessarily, I I don't think you necessarily have to specifically state that down here. Um because if somebody wants to take advantage of shared parking, they need to go through the special permit process through the planning board and provide the calculations and the dem- and demonstrate um you know, the meeting these requirements of shared parking. So if somebody came forward and said, well, I want a special permit for shared parking and I'm going to I want to take credit and share the commuter spaces, um you know, the planning board has the ability to say you know, yes or or no. So so somebody wouldn't be able to go through and 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 do do both and and unless they demonstrated to the planning board that that somehow met all of these shared parking requirements. And if it met all of these shared parking requirements and the planning board agreed, then the planning board could go further and, you know, and discuss um, you know, discuss these other elements. So I, so A and C is just topics for discussion. It and so the board may only want to provide the commuter parking incentive and, you know, allow a reduction in affordable housing or only allow a reduction in open space.
But it it seems to me that if I were a developer um and I had previously, you know, sized um the development to have shared parking. Um I I certainly wouldn't apply for that. I definitely go to getting relief in terms of affordable housing. Um because that that would be economically, I would think, much more attractive than in providing extra parking spaces.
So so that can, that can be deleted.
Well, what's what's in in my mind, the only thing I would leave would be the parking relief. Um you know, when when people talk about what this is, you know, just generally the the vibe of the town, I don't think anyone looks at development and says, thank God, there's less open space because we have more parking. And then we can say, oh, well, it's dedicated commuter parking, that's good. Well, you know, I I think most people look at that and say, well, we need more green, not less in order to, you know. So the idea of reducing more open space to facilitate fifty more parking spaces just seems like a crazy trade off to me personally. Um and then again, reducing the affordable ratio where everyone's already kind of nervous that this won't have a real mix of affordability to say, oh, you know, we managed to pave more of it, so it's good that there's less affordable units. It just, it doesn't seem like a reasonable trade off from the perspective of the town's goals. Um parking relief to me seems like something that is good because they're not going to sell any spots they don't have. And it forces the owner of the building to actually manage it properly. Um because if you're saying that you have to have twenty dedicated commuter spots, they're going to maximize something about it that makes it more appropriate in the sense that each unit instead of a two bedroom unit or a three bedroom unit getting three spa, two spots or whatever the argument is, the parking relief might be that they only get one. The parking relief might be that they only get one, that that's their spot. And then you just have one less car in town and it's, it's for the unit owner to figure out as opposed to. The developer to facilitate more and more parking availability. Uh, you know, and, and. I, I always look at the studies that have been done by, or the, the, the studies that were done by. Public works related to parking in the center of town where people say there's not enough parking, there's not enough parking. And. When they actually looked at where spots were open and, and things like that, there is actually an abundance of parking, it's just not exactly where people look for it right away. You know what I mean, that, that there's the ability to walk a certain distance for most people, but most people don't do that in the sense if there isn't a parking spot right in front of the store you're looking for. You have a perception that there's not a, an abundance of parking available. And if somebody's trying to develop something substantial. They're, they're not going to build it without enough parking because people won't shop there, you won't be able to rent these places if, if. You know, there's, there's no ability to get there, so. I, I just, I, I'm, I'm less concerned that there's a permanent problem with parking if anything changes. I think it's more impactful in the other spots, but that's my take.
I tend to agree. But I know it's a very hot button issue, so.
Elizabeth, was this based on, and, and maybe she had a sip away, but I just couldn't remember if this was like. Based on some language from another town or MBTA, or if this was suggested somewhere or used already somewhere else?
Um, no, this was just part of the conversation that the board has had over the last. Few months and concerns raised, so.
Okay, yeah, I thought I remembered, maybe it was Kate saying like, uh, or maybe it was you, I can't remember, some. We're going to look at a couple other communities, but maybe that was unrelated.
So I did reach out to MAPC and. They spoke to other subregional coordinators and their transportation planner and their. They're not aware of any other community. Going to, you know, addressing commuter parking in this manner.
I don't know, I mean, it's just, just at this point, does it just make sense to like? Get feedback at the forum rather than trying to decide if it's right or wrong?
We want to get as close as we can to now. Um, you know, or, or at least, or try to get, get it to a point where we can make a question, a poll question that people could respond to. Even if it's. But, but be able to provide choices. I think we want to not leave it open ended if we can help it.
So that. That is one of the, I think, five, it's in the agenda memo. When the public information officer and the MAPC planner and I, you know, started talking about the. Public forum, that was one of the poll questions that, you know, we talked about having.
And, and I mean, I guess related to that, and we don't have to get too deep into it, you know. Conceivably, we could say, you know, rank these three things, open space or, or green space. You know, commuter parking availability and. You know, whatever, and we could kind of get a sense if people kind of ranked their three choices. What was most important, rather, you know, like Andrew, you were saying, I think. You know, green space is more important than commuter parking, and I was kind of thinking that as well, certainly based on the comments that we've heard over time, but. We could at least gauge from the, you know, people who attended and responded to the meeting, that's, that's one way to also. Help us to. Kind of come to consensus on, on this particular issue.
So that would be a, a poll question.
I mean, it would be like.
You know, rank these items in, you know, by importance. You could have commuter, you know, commuter parking, open space, affordable housing.
Um, I mean, I would keep it to relatively quote, like if we could do three, I think that would be.
And, and sustainability, so those four.
Um, yeah, and I think we just want to be careful about how we rate this, write the stem of that, you know, rank them, you know, for what in, in terms of just in this. Development here area or in, in town in general, like what is most important to them in general, so I guess we want to give that a little bit of thought. I, I kind of, I, I'm not sure if that kind of ranking is going to get us to. People are going to really be understanding the trade offs and the implication of that rank, ranking vis a vis. This issue, because I think, well, first of all, a lot of people that are interested in the forum are not driving and parking there. But I think, like, if we were really going to understand this issue. Seems like a bigger issue of understanding where people currently parking, like what's. Parking is not here, where would it be? So asking people to trade off, like, would you like open space or commuter parking, like, I'm, I'm just not sure. If that accurately represents the, the trade off that. We're talking about here. Well, and, and I don't necessarily know that we are, I mean, I guess this is making a trade off if we are saying, you know, we're. This is specifically trading off, but I don't know that we are going to be losing. Commuter parking necessarily, so I guess I was just thinking. If for some reason, the specific question. Uh, of, you know, what would you be willing to trade off or something was one way that we asked the poll question. Sometimes asking kind of a related, but different poll question. Um, helps to kind of triangulate, you know, what we're getting at, so it wouldn't be certainly not in, instead of. But it would possibly be in addition to, to gain kind of a better perspective on, on people's views in general.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of interesting, I mean, if you're driving to park at the commuter rail, like. And this goes away, will you just, if you're driving in your car anyways, like, will you just go to West Concord or Acton, like? To your point, Kristen, like. What will, it's hard to know what the true impact's going to be.
I, I, I've been jumping in and out of this meeting as I just did some computer problems, but I've been listening in all along. I, I think the idea here is, you, you know, we've heard. A lot of concern expressed about the Crosby commuter parking. And what we would want, we want to do is provide a, a mechanism by which that parking would. Be recreated if there was a project really that fit these requirements, twenty additional residential units. That, that, where a developer would otherwise not be incented to create affordable. Uh, excuse me, commuter parking, if they didn't require a special permit, what, what kind of incentives can we do? I think we should go to the public forum and say, are, would people be in favor in, in terms of protecting commuter parking spaces? Uh, trading off some of these other things and, and, and having them look at it, I think people will, will get that. Whether or not their commuter park, they're, they're coming in there to park today, or whether, whether or not, you know, that their focus is on affordable housing, I think they. Can appreciate the reason for having this. This mechanism.
So you're kind of jumping ahead to the, the forum. Which, to, to Haley's point. Yeah, these items can be just removed from the draft. Until the board, you know, gets more information and feedback at the forum and then decide. How to insert this if that's the direction you want to go.
Well, I, I mean, for me personally, and, and I don't mean to speak for, for discussion here, I think we should have a mechanism along the lines of one of these things. And certainly if, if the public feedback is no way, no how, we should have twenty percent affordable. Um, and there shouldn't be, that's much more important than commuter parking, then that should be reflected in, in what results. But I think we, people should see that we've been thinking about ways to do this and both, both on the commuter parking and the sustainability. Sustainable development piece. I, I would be in terms of what gets presented at the public forum, I would, I would want to be able to put this or something very similar to it up on the board and, and, and solicit people's feedback. I mean, the reason for this language is, is in direct response to the feedback we've received to date.
I don't have anything else on commuter parking, but on the sustainability anyways. I think where I personally have been landing through research is that. Um, I know we need to talk with Amanda, the sustainability director, but more is that. Maybe the best place to tackle this is in. Site plan review rather than here in the zoning. Just given what I'm seeing in Watertown and North Hampton, of course. So I don't, I haven't, hadn't put any more thought into this particular five dot five for that reason.
Do, can you, uh, shed a little more light on that? What, what is it about the site plan review that would be preferable to the, the, that's what would be essentially is. What, what under this provision here?
Um, well. I guess this is just where I, that's just where I'm seeing it done as, you know, as, as examples, um, is ending up. For one reason or another, I don't really know, in site plan review rather than in the actual zoning, I mean, and we don't. Again, I, I was kind of surprised to, to see Watertown, but they're, they basically have for. Particular zoning areas, they're saying any new developments, you know, must meet X, Y, Z. Criteria, uh, so it's not even like an incentive, it's just saying it, it must be so, um, which, you know, you all know I'm in favor of that. Um, I don't think we should offer carrots if they're not needed, uh, I'd much rather it's, you know, use sticks, um, which. So it just looks like we're able to do that. I, well, I'd fully admit, I just am surprised for what I even saw in Watertown especially. But I, I can send that language around, I know I had those slides that we didn't get to, I think last time maybe, um, or Watertown in particular, but. Yeah, I guess because I didn't, didn't, like here. For, for a, and that was my, part of my question about the combined residential and commercial. It's not a special permit. It's just site plan review, so that is another reason why maybe that's, it's captured in site plan review rather than. I've gotten, gotten a little bit confused with like how the combined residential commercial is actually, is actually like governed if it's not. Technically through a special permit process.
So it would, it. It would still require site plan review?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that was my point for like, why another reason it would just, we should, we should try to tackle it there.
I mean, Elizabeth, Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were doing a site plan review, we would be looking towards this. This provision of the zoning code and, and, in reviewing the site plan.
Correct, you, you would have to make the required findings A through H under section. Eleven. Eight, no, eleven, seven, no, I can't even remember, hang on. Eleven, eight, I was right the first time.
Okay. You, you were just citing the site plan review section of the zoning by law?
Yes, the, the criteria A through H. Which. Is. Haley, um, pointed out, I mean. Item H deals with the sustainability. And then.
So obviously been on my list to say we need to update the site plan review. More, you know, generally speaking for, for some, you know, more concrete sustainability requirements, just as. I guess my own understanding has evolved with like what we can actually do based on North Hampton and, and Watertown.
Uh, well, a, a completely different topic, um, the board. Does not have rules and regulations governing site plans, so that would, that would be where you would get very specific. Similar to what North Hampton has done.
It sounds like a fantastic goal for twenty twenty two.
Is that only because you're not going to be here?
No. Uh, it's because we have a full plate between now and.
Yes, I'm just kidding. Well, it doesn't have to be done at town meeting, which is a good thing, right?
Correct, it, it only requires a public hearing.
Okay, so. I. Let's, let's just get a consensus because we, we've had a discussion, it's been a little bit around, around the horn on this. How do people feel about presenting this as an option? Around commuter parking and, and I guess, Elizabeth, the, the language here, you've got a seven eleven five five, it, it's a repeat, but the idea is that we would have. Some sort of sustainability statement there, right? Okay. About having this as an option for consideration and we can figure out whether there, there will be a poll question or, or. Or otherwise at the, at the forum. Let me just go around the, Haley, how do you feel about that?
Um. I feel fine about that.
Okay, Kristen?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, Kate, Kate?
Um, I, I'm not in favor of this approach, I think we're incentivizing the development of the slot, which creates a problem of. With commuter parking that we're then solving by compromising on our ideals with regard to affordable housing and open space, so I'm not, I'm not for this.
Okay, I'm going to then ask you to think of what you, what a preferred approach you would like to see with respect to the commuter parking, Andrew.
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with this. Presenting it to the, the, the public forum.
For feedback.
To get feedback.
And, and Linda?
Um, I side more with Kate and, and I, I agree some of the earlier points she made about. You know, who's showing up at the public forum versus who might have a different perspective on commuter parking. I, I'm, I'm not sure how informative it will be, but I, I like to think about. I mean, I think the issues are important in terms of figuring out commuter parking, um, and I think that. Most people just assume it's a responsibility of the town. Um, and, and we need to be really sensitive to that, but I, I'm not sure how we'll. Figure out. The trade off for sort of this public good with. Other ones. I, I'll try and give it some thought.
Okay, uh, well, I'm, I'm in support of getting, getting the idea and the discussion at the public forum, so I think that we should take that approach. But Linda and Kate, if you, you know, what, what we're responding to is, is concerns actually largely raised by Kate and on the board around commuter parking and, and feedback from day one. For members of the public about concerns about commuter parking and what, and, and that is. That's a very specific public good that's been identified by the community that is present in this. Site in this area, and yes, there are other general town public goods that we, that. Are reflected in our zoning code that are reflected in our long range plan, and this would be a trade off of that. But I, that's exactly the scenario where I think the input of the public is, is really important. If there are other mechanisms, I mean, this is maybe a crude mechanism, so if there are other mechanisms that we could go about it. I, I have always welcome that input. And maybe a member of the public will be the person who provides a, a good solution to create that balance between these various public interests. Um, I think we've gone through the open issues in the, the, the proposed revision, Elizabeth, and were there any other highlighted points? I've been a little discombobulated on my end as my computer crashed out on me.
Um, no, there were no other highlighted areas.
Okay, great. So let me ask the board, we, in, as we look forward to the public forum. Do we want to go through, and this would be a, a big item for. Do we want to go through, and this would be a, a big item for tonight, but do we want to go through the, um, the, the facts on this proposal that the draft facts?
I, I think it's important. I mean, I think in the, when we've had public comment in the last. Several meetings, you know, we've heard, you know, similar things and I want, and we're trying to address them in writing so that can be spread out and. And, and I think it's really important to, you know, put the facts in there. I mean, people have their perceptions. About change and about what this is, but I think the FAQs also are really providing facts that I hope will. Help people kind of understand, you know, what's going on better. So I, I'd like to make sure we get that right.
Okay.
Close as possible.
Okay, so for the pub, for this public forum, not for, not for town meeting, but for the forum. Okay. Elizabeth? You wanna, can you, can you present those? I believe what we've got is the facts with, with prior feedback provided directly to you by Kate. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking me to do.
Uh, to, to put those up and we can.
Oh, the, oh.
FAQs.
Oh, the FAQ. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was, I was thinking of something different. Yep. Hang on a second.
Um, I'm pretty worried that, that I think the FAQ document's a little bit outdated at this point and. I'm pretty worried this is going to take a, a really long time to do. That a valid concern or?
I think it will take a long time. Um, I think this is our opportunity before the public forum though to address it.
Okay. Well, one thing that might be helpful is to just make sure that, um. You know, we figure out what the, you know, top things that are trying to be addressed in this document. Um, maybe if, maybe if we come to agreement on that. Um, and then we can then maybe offline, we can see, you know, what's currently being addressed, if there's something that's not being addressed, that kind of thing.
I think that's a really good approach. So to that point, I mean, one of the things that I, Kristen, you said earlier in the meeting. What, when we were looking at the, the, it's not the preamble, but the, the, the goals that are stated in, and, and the. Intro to the, the proposed zoning by law section. I think that does a good job of capturing the why, and I've often thought, well, how do I explain this if I had to explain it to somebody on an elevator ride, what we're doing? And in my mind, that boils down to essentially, um, the following, we're slightly reducing height allowances in the district. We're requiring buildings to meet the street and that the parking be behind. Um, we are allowing for a, um. The, the creation of combined business and residential where it does not need to be in the same building and we're implementing design standards. So that it, it maintains the, 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 the design preferences that were expressed at prior public forums. That's it in, in, for nutshell, or for points, for, for bullets. I guess. Jumping off from that. Does anybody else see any main points that we need to make? It would be good to have addressed. In a easy to digest, plain English FAQ.
Um, I think you left out a couple of things there, um, for in, like, we're lowering the open space requirement. In orders to that people will be more incentivized to build, we're lowering the. Portable housing requirements that people will be incentivized to build, lowering the parking requirements that people won't be incentivized to build. So I think that that's important to include too. In fact, um. Yeah, I think it was really good in here and I, and maybe you're saying, well, those are the details that we don't want people to get too caught up in, but, um, I think.
I'm not saying that at all, Kate.
Oh, okay. Um, well, um. One of the great things about in the FAQ is, um, there's a table listing what the changes are, like what is it now and what are we proposing? So I think that's a good. Spot. That's one of the most useful things in, in here, I think, in terms of like, what is this?
Great. Let's start there. All right. Um, so. Elizabeth, I'm just wondering, has any of these things changed? I know that the height requirements that in turn, you've got setbacks or the, is there? I don't think we've changed the, the lot size, um. Dimensional requirements, right? That's.
Correct.
Remains the same. Um, setbacks zero to 10, that's slightly different, isn't it? Is Sudbury Road 10 or is it 12?
Nope, it's 12.
Okay. Then parking requirements, one space per one bedroom unit, one and a half spaces per two and two plus bedroom. Okay. Now, the, this fact that says consider adding parking max. Some per unit. Um, we haven't done that, correct?
Correct.
All right. So maybe we just remove that.
Sorry, this is the PDF version, so I can't edit that on the fly. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
So if you want to wait, I can, I can bring up the other version.
Let's do that if you could.
So is that something, um. That you, you have the original version, Kate? I'm not sure I got. I think all I got was a PDF.
Yeah, there's the word version.
Um, so the date on. 10. So I'm not finding the 1022 word version.
Yeah, the. 1012 version.
I have the 1012 version. So wait.
That's, I think that's what I had too, was the 1012 version.
Nope, I found it. Okay.
Okay, so this is editable now in work. Okay. With respect to the density, right? So there's no, there, uh, just a little bit further up density. We've say none, but can you help me first understand what that means? No, density is none.
Um, under the, um. Current zoning bylaw for a combined business residence. It. There's no, there's no density minimum or maximum. It's so whatever somebody proposes that meets. All those requirements or limitations or, you know, setbacks in parking and open space and, um, that. Regulates the density.
And we've, we've focused to date on those dimensional elements and the other, the other requirements, but not specifically on density. Forty, chapter 40 R standards, is that the, uh, is that? The communities act?
Um, no, that's something completely different. So as to Kate's point, this section.
It's not.
Is, is old and it's not the direction that the board has gone.
Okay, so I suppose remove that. And then. Maintain same commercial and office minimums, allow shared parking between residential and uses. Uh, and commercial uses, but that, that's currently allowed to, so the joint parking facilities between, okay, such as restaurants, banks. Okay, so that's the same thing. Okay.
I don't, I don't know why.
The table won't let you see the whole thing?
Oh, there we go. Okay. All right.
Okay, so residential by right prohibit new single family housing. Uh, this is now sort of a little bit of a longer list, right? I think we've said no single family, uh, no boarding house.
Yep, so this needs to be updated.
Okay. Just update, so just maybe for tonight, we'll just say update based upon the revised use table. For, for both res. Denial and commercial, though the note at the top, um, I think is important for commercial. I think that was probably the guiding. The guiding principle we used in going through that, that table of uses.
Not to rehash this, but was there? It seems like it originally was a thought to prohibit new single family.
I think that, I think that is the case.
As drafted.
Elizabeth, or do we, is that single family still on the table of uses?
Yes.
It is.
I think, I think so.
Yes.
Okay. Well, so then the, the comment stands update. Okay. I, I, and if anybody has, has any comments as we go through, please make them. I think the next one is accurate, but I think we actually prohibit all industrial uses.
I'll just go through and update all of these based on the table.
Right. All right, um. So the, Kate, I think that this is the comment that you, you, you were touching on. With respect to the other issues that I didn't mention in my four, in my elevator version of this. About revising inclusionary and open space requirements for mixed use development, ensure development balances public benefits with financial feasibility. Do you have any comments on that?
Um, well, I, I think it would be good, I, I think it would be great to just have, what is it existing and then what is the proposed? And then I think it'd be great to have a separate column that says, here's why we're changing it.
Okay, so more adjust the facts column of, and, and we were looking at something like that. I think that's a good idea. We were looking at something like that. Uh, effectively by seeing that the, how, how the zoning code was, was edited. So maybe. Elizabeth, maybe what we could do to facilitate that is. Have a simple statement of what the existing, uh, what's allowed today, a, a, a column that. Has a new, new version and then sort of the editorial reason why. Like, because I think to Kate's point, what we've got here is kind of a mixing of editorialization in the throat, in, in the potential zoning column. Kate, is that, is that kind of the point you're driving it? Okay. I, and I think that exercise is probably a little bit beyond the scope of this, this. Public meeting. Um, I'm just wondering the best way to facilitate that. That it's allowable in terms of, of producing this material outside that, outside this meeting.
Um, so, uh, one, one planning board member can volunteer to review edits.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't think that I should be that member because I think my perspective is a lot different than other people, that most of my board members, so. All my recommendations are going to be skewed towards me, so I don't think I should be that person.
Okay, is any, anybody else feel like they want to review the edits? If not, I'll, I'll, I'll do it.
And I can do it too, if you want to have two different people do it separately, Elizabeth.
Um, yeah, you're, you both can review it separately and.
Just to see if we're right, arriving kind of at the same points or whatever.
All right.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I, I wonder if reasons for change, I mean, I think we're getting at the, at this, at the right thing here, but. I think the thing that I'm hearing. Citizens who've, who've spoken up at meetings in public comment. What I'm hearing is two different things, like, oh my gosh, there's going to be all this development. Coming and so, and, and we want to say, well, you know what, there could be all that development now. And, and this is, you know, how we're going to influence what that development is. And then there's also the point I hear from Kate, which is. You know, we're actually trying to incentivize development where there might not be any and, um. And I feel like those are two kind of important points.
I, and I think that that, I think, yeah, exactly, Kristen. That can go into sort of the why and why we're doing this paragraphs up above. I think, I think Kate though is really, you know, zeroing in on this table. I mean, this is the thing. That, um, I think would be really helpful to side by side. What the actual changes are, I think, and, and I think it would be benefit because I think people would be surprised actually how limited they are. But maybe some of them are very important changes. So highlighting those and then the rationale for why that particular change, I think would probably be a, a very good way to present this. The overall, like to your point, the overall, um, why is this being done? I mean, you know. Twenty thirty plan directed the planning board to do this specifically to rezone the road depot and, but you know, and, um. The, um, but just having side by side the specific changes. I mean, for example, I think a lot of people are under the impression that we're, we're raising the height limits, right? And, and initially on paper, without digging into the way we measure. Pitcher, it looked that way, uh, and it turns out at the end of the day, and with in response to public feed, feedback, we're lowering the height limits across the district. So I, I, just having that side by side, I think will really help people understand the, the, the scope of the change.
Right, and like some of the things with setbacks and, you know. Close to residential as well.
I think, okay, so. Wanting to be productive, respectful for all the board's time and all the members of the, the public who are, are sticking with us here. Maybe what we should do is, um. Elizabeth, we'll update that. Let's focus on. Um, Kristen, if you would take a review, I, if Elizabeth, if you would distribute this, I think to the, all the board. But we're specifically Kristen and I are tasked with providing you feedback. But directly back to Elizabeth, just to be clear. The, uh, I, I, and my focus will be on this table and bringing clarity to this table. Kristen, I think you've got some ideas on the, on the, um, on the more sort of explanatory paragraphs above. And we could come up with, with something that way before the, uh, the forum. I don't know if it makes a lot of sense to otherwise go through this unless there are particular points that anybody want. I don't know if it makes a lot of sense to otherwise go through this unless there are particular points that anybody wants to. To weigh in on now.
Yeah, well, can I just the stuff that I most would want to change is. The first pay on the first page. Um, at the bottom of the first page, Elizabeth. Um, the language that's highlighted there, every every town in Massachusetts grapples with a legacy of explicit policies of segregation rezoning to allow for range of housing types and sizes. As a concrete action towards increasing diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. I think that that's. Not fair. Um, it feels like it's sort of capitalizing on people's guilt and concern about this issue right now, but I I don't think it's. This is addressing a policy. Um, that led to segregation. I I just think it's it's. Too much and I. I think it's you, I think it's I think it's it's like using this issue to advocate for our this project. And when I don't, I don't really think that they're that intimately connected.
Yeah, yes, Kristen.
I mean, I I think what we have been trying to do is provide more diversity in housing, diversity being not single family homes. Um, and you know, particularly in in transit, you know, near transit locations, and I think that's what this is specifically doing. I think that it's important to call out that diversity. Of homes and not single family, that single family homes was really a segregatory policy. I'm sorry if that's not really a word, but. And so I I hear what you're saying. You don't want to. You know, say something just to catch a buzzword of the current. Times right now, but I I do think. That we are trying to, and I mean, and Marcia has actually looked through or, you know, part of the charge was to evaluate our zoning policies for. You know, kind of hold over or to make sure their inclusionary policies and things like that, or at least they're not exclusionary. So I I that's my opinion is that I I do think it's important to call out. People don't realize that. Strictly single family, you know, zoning has been traditionally exclusionary.
That's not what the zoning today is not single family zoning. I guess what 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 is? And 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 maybe I also want to know more about this issue, like this is referring to explicit policies of segregation. So what is the policy? That led to segregation that we are addressing here?
It it's the the idea. Generally, um, with zoning rules. That were crafted after the nineteen twenties was that. When racial covenants fell, the goal was to reduce economic diversity within towns and the idea was that. Because certain people had less money, they would be less likely to build houses there. And so Concord does have a complete lack of economic diversity where. Different housing stocks could help address that. At least, at least the way I see it.
Well, and Andrew, thank you for that, that. That explanation, I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't qualify that by saying just as the way you see it. I think there's pretty specific evidence in the law. That the zoning codes that arose in that in that period that you're referring to were were specifically intended. To replace what had been expressed racial. Restrictions and and whether there was ever one in Concord or not, the this model of zoning that is that. Well, there is multifamily allowed. By design almost required, I mean, we we see that the how little multifamily there is as a result of the current zoning. Was very much modeled on that on on what was the intent was segregation. There's, Kate, you're in property law right now, right? Is that right?
I'm not in property law right.
Oh, okay. That's it's a pretty big, pretty big section of reading the case law on this.
Um, yeah, I understand. I understand what you guys are saying, but I don't think the changes that we're proposing right now are. And I also don't think that we have as a board a clear idea of. What our diverse housing stock isn't conquered right now and like, is it fully subscribed? Do we need more? What types of housing do we need more of? So. I guess I am so that's I I don't, I would just erase that 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 sentence that says a legacy of explicit policies that led to segregation. I think it's. It's almost like offensive to. That history that we're using that to. Advocate for these stages, changes, which I don't see necessarily as particularly. Progressive on that front, so that's my opinion.
Okay.
So. To to Kate's point, I don't, I don't think deleting that sentence changes. Changes anything. I I think the point is still made with. And it's allowed. In and it's in. So I think I think there's ways to.
Yeah, that's perfect.
To change this, but to Kate's point. We do have the housing production plan. Um, it's, it's going to be updated, but that that plan is, you know, it's not that old. So it does give a snapshot of. The the town does not have. Does not have a a mix or diversity of housing. Concord Green, which everybody loves Concord Green, when there what used to be a garden apartment by law and then. You know, everybody was just so concerned with that type of development and. You know, just all the traffic and this, it's the same things, you know, the the. Schools and we'll have to build a new school and well, we're the town's currently building a new school and it's. It's, it's not because the student population has exploded, so it. But the housing production plan, even the one that was done, I think it was five years ago or six years ago. Um, Concord does not have, you know. Diverse housing. Especially in its village centers. So. But I deleting deleting that sentence doesn't change, doesn't change this paragraph.
Okay, great. So could we now go to the commuter rail parking section? Uh, yeah, here, I just added like a little bit more of information on what the parking is. So, um, Elizabeth, I would just ask you to. Look through that when you're updating the table and just see if you want to keep any of that. It's helpful or just to delete it. I don't know that we have to talk about it right now.
Um, yeah, I I can. I can take a look and have Marshall review it as well.
And then just the last sentence of of the FAQ. Um, just this, oh, and then I just suggested we include the green zoning measure, the sustainability section, but I don't know, I'm not. I don't, I don't. It's not that important to me at this point. Um, the last sentence of this says. The zoning bylaws are not set in stone. If at some point in the future it becomes apparent that the zoning not meeting the community needs, the future modifications can be made. And I think that that's also. Like, you know, after after like something is built that everyone hates, then we can change it, but it's like, yeah, but like we can't get rid of that, whatever it was. Which is a bill, it just, it just implies a like a reversibility of these changes that I don't think are necessarily there, so I would, I would take that out.
I think she's talking about the the modification to the zoning by law itself, so. That that those changes can be made over.
I know that, but that's not going to address the problem if there's something problematic arises under the these changes. The fact that we can like later go back and prevent future like something. Future is not, doesn't address the problem that was just created under this change, so I just, that's what I'm saying. I understand that future changes can be made to the bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, you you've really touched on the whole reason for this exercise is that we're looking at a essentially. A suburban model development that was created. I don't know what Crosby's was in the nineteen seventies, that building went in, Elizabeth, right?
I believe so, yes.
Nineteen seventy, so a forty year old commercial building. What we're doing this to steer future development, right, to a model that is more in line with. The the goals that were expressed in the original public forum in terms of what it would look like. So I guess the inverse of this point is if we don't do anything. We might get something that's allowable under the current zoning by law that doesn't have design standards, that doesn't have these various things.
And and that's what I've been thinking about, like, you know, not in the business district, but an example of where. Um, the process of having design guidelines and kind of an iterative process with the planning board. Is our, you know, PRD process, right, where we work with a potential developer. And to try to get the best thing, you know, for the town, and so we spend a lot of time putting in design guidelines and things like that, if I'm using the term correctly. Because if we, if we don't do that, we could get a development that is less preferable, but still allowed by right. Um, and that's certainly something that. You know. Could happen, and so we similarly, what we're trying to say is if development goes in here. Um, which, you know, there's no reason that it it won't go in here. That we want to be able to make sure it stays within town character and with all in sustainability, with all of the, you know, things that have been identified as important. And a long range plan, so I I hope that we kind of keep that in mind as we, you know, craft. Both the FAQ for, you know, people who are just joining and learning about it, but also it kind of keeps us. Keeping in mind kind of what our charges for the planning board did to kind of a. Help and enable the long range plan.
Yeah, and so in terms of this last sentence, I would delete it. Um, because I think it's. It's not. Paying enough respect to the concerns that people have. About. Like not wanting this to go in this direction, to say that it can be, the bylaw can be changed in the future is not acknowledging that once things are built under this bylaw. We're not going to be able to change it in the future like that thing. And I'm not, and that's not conflicting with what Burton said or what Kristen said, it's a separate issue.
Right, and there could be the alternative way of writing it, which is we could get something we really don't like now under the current bylaws and we want to prevent that from happening.
I I mean, what I view this as is a statement that says, we're we're a board of volunteers. We are, we we work with an outside consultant. We may not get it perfect. These things get refined over time. That's what this sentence is about. It's just like the way we did, um, you know, the discussion around two families, right? Let's make it by special permit first and then maybe. You know, i- it would be by right in certain residential districts and then maybe townwide, right? Doing things incrementally because we 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 do need to see what the consequences are. And I think that that this is essentially saying, you know, it's not set in stone. If there are modifications that need to happen, let's say we find out that. That reducing the height limits like we've done is 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 it creates a problem, right, that that none of these buildings. You know, that a lot of the existing buildings, you know, couldn't be modified. Uh, because we've reduced how high they can build, you know, maybe that would be something that a future board would would need to be considered and people. Need to remember that these things, I mean, the the planning board comes before town meeting with four to six articles every year. Right, tweaking the zoning zoning by law.
Okay, so those are, that's, they're just my comments that I would have highlighted at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. All right. Elizabeth, is there anything else you need from us? Uh, from the board, uh, with respect to the throw depot items in in preparation for the. The the form.
Um, not at this time, I mean, I'll continue, I'll work with. Aaron and Chris at MAPC and. Modify, you know, pre- previous presentations to address all of these issues and then. I'll work with you Burton on finalizing the presentation.
Wonderful, great. Thank you. Then with that, for for folks that are on the line and and I wanted to have comments on the on the scenic roads general by law. Or on that through a depot business district, we will have public comment at the end of the meeting and we we. And of course, there will be plenty of opportunity to provide feedback on the throw depot in the public forum.
Now, sorry, are we going to move on from there? Can we just talk about maybe logistics for December fourteenth? Is it in person and what's the format?
It's a hybrid.
No, it's a, it's a hybrid meeting, so the planning board will meet in person in the town hall. Uh, in the hearing room, but there will be a provision for people to. Join the meeting as a hybrid meeting.
And we're not doing breakout sessions. This is just the one where.
Thank you. No, no breakout sessions.
Got it.
Um, but the the polling will be for both. Um, in person and if there's in person people and. Virtual.
Okay, that. The Elizabeth, your next agenda item was twenty twenty two. Annual town meeting. Potential bylaws, is that with respect to. Far or or which formula business, which which one do requires further input at this juncture?
So I don't, I. I don't think the formula business worth the road depot. Requires input unless somebody. Other than. Expanding on the explanation if the board feels that needs to be done. I mean, the 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 bylaws pretty self-explanatory, the. Language for throw depot was just taken out of the vision statement, and so it would only be expanding on the explanation, which the board has. Three, three additional meetings to do that, so you don't have to do that tonight.
Okay, I mean, the only thing that I would add to the explanation is we've implemented these successfully for. Uh, the the town center and for West Concord and 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 this is. Something that there's interest in having for the through a depot as well. Okay. Then. What about the floor ratio proposal?
So, um, do you want me to bring up? The latest version.
That'd be great.
Um, so. This is the, you know, the existing, and Kate had asked me to go through. The actual table and and pull out a couple of. And look to see how. She had calculated things and then looking at the property record cards and. So I've I pulled out a couple. And I think it's gonna have to. The ones that I looked at, mine are a little higher than Kate's, so. They're, they're definitely not lower, so maybe Kate and I can get together. After. After Thanksgiving and. Just zoom and go through and the examples and and we can. Um, we can work on, you know, where. Where the. Differences would be, and then for discussion tonight, it's. It's basically figuring out what. What is the right number, you know, currently it's twelve hundred. You know, is seventeen hundred. Because if. If you, if you change this number, you know. Up, you know, I've definitely not not down, but is going from twelve hundred to seventeen hundred, is that, you know, is that too much? And I think that's the conversation the board has to have.
Okay, so is, uh, let me just understand where we're coming from. So the existing one is the lot size times point two four. Plus twelve hundred divided by the lot area and and this point zero five number is coming from.
I don't know where that came from. So Kate, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Yes, I certainly can. Um, so what? As you know, we've had several go rounds of this where the board felt that the numbers were not aggressive enough. So what I did was I kind of went backwards and said, okay, folks who were really vocal, what do you want to see as a result? And then I backfitted a formula into that result. So that is, that is where point zero, zero point zero five came from is I tried to. Multiple formulas just to see how I could get to the numbers that people wanted.
multiple formulas just to see how I could get to the numbers that people wanted to see.
Okay. And I think our focus was, so this is interesting because what it does is has a smaller, it, it, you've got a sort of a curve compared to the last, the, the existing one, right? It, it pushes down by some, some percentage on the 5,000 square foot lots and the 10,000 square foot lots. It really pushes it down on the 40,000 and 80,000 square foot lots. Did you want to talk about this as, as, whether these are appropriate numbers at this juncture?
Um, so Burton, you missed this conversation of the last meeting. But yeah, so there's a couple of different aspects to it. So one is that asking people kind of what they wanted to see at sort of a gut level. Another is that Kristen found some numbers that are like average home size in Massachusetts and nationwide. And looking at what that average home size was across all single family homes. And so that's one thing to think about. Another thing to think about is whether there's a legal standard that we have to meet here in terms of the impact here and how we're regulating and whether that's within our purview on the, the planning board.
Yep.
And what, and I think that that question definitely needs to be explored further.
So what is, what is your question, Kate? Whether the, whether the town can do this?
Yes.
Isn't that question more?
That's already been decided by the attorney general towns can can implement floor area ratios to deal with regulating bulk and.
Land usage or there was another.
I'd be surprised that we can just do like there's no limits on that. That would be really surprising.
Well, no, I mean, there, but there's, there's no, there's no number limit. It's, it, it's that balance between, you know, regulating land use and bulk and, and those things and, and exceeding what is and I, and I can't think of the word town council reasonable. So, so this is, you know, this is the conversation, you know, is this formula reasonable? And, you know, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you my opinion. It might be reasonable for, you know, a very, a small 5,000 square foot lot and, and, you know, I think even, you know, even a 10,000 square foot lot, 2,200, you know, it's on the lower end. I, I don't think it's reasonable for the larger lots. I think it goes too far. So it, it's, but there's, there's no, there's no number, the attorney, because it, you know, it can depend on the community. It can depend on a lot of, you know, a lot of different things. But the attorney general has said, this is a valid way to regulate those things. But it's the, it's the board that has to come up with that reasonable test.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I guess I, the, the attorneys did use the word reasonable. So I would love to drill down on that in terms of what that means.
But there, but there is, there is, I mean, that's, it's a reasonable is, is a subjective term. So that's why the board has numerous conversations about zoning bylaws. That's why the board has, you know, a public hearing. That's why, you know, the town has town meeting. So, you know, to Burton's point, it's, you know, it's a seven member volunteer board who's trying to get public comments as, you know, best they can to develop something to determine what is reasonable.
I, I think, Kate, there would be the, the two checks on this is the reality is two things. You could go deep enough that you could find yourself facing a constitutional regulatory taking claim. And there was that you, but to get there, you need to diminish value by a very substantial percentage. And I, I, you know, I haven't read those cases for 20 years. So forgive me, I can't tell you how deep you need to go. The other thing is, is, is the wisdom of town meeting, right? I, I think that if we were proposing something that is, you know, it would impact the value of people's property significantly. Then the people will be, you know, weighing in their minds, does, is, does this make my property more valuable? Because the town will continue to have its look or feel, or does it impact me more personally? Because it's reducing it. I, I, just my quick feedback on this is, I think we, when we talk about mansionization, what we talk about is the teardown of the, of the, of houses that were, were developed largely. And it was interesting to see that map of all the teardowns. Largely, and post-war neighborhoods that were small capes that are now turning into large houses that look shoehorned onto their lots. And so it actually is those smaller units. If somebody, you know, far out off of Monument Road wants to build on a 80,000 square foot lot, a big, great big house. That for me, that, that I have less concern about that as a community. I don't care that somebody lives in a particularly big house. What I care about is when an established neighborhood with a smaller, more, you know, traditional feel is, is modified. So that, that was, for me, it was interesting to look at how this curve played out was that it actually had a big impact on those larger, larger properties.
Is there a number that you'd want to see on those larger properties? So right now it's 20,000 on an 80,000. So what would you want to see that be?
What, what, when you're, when you're talking about reasonable this though, and you're talking about regulating height, weight, or I keep saying height, weight, like a volume thing, but, and setbacks. Those are the things that define sort of what a FAR is. And when you're talking about an 80,000 square foot lot, I'm not even convinced it's something that you should worry about more than take the formula that works for the, that gets you where you want to be on those smaller lots and just apply it to the bigger lot, even though it's not going to apply, even though it's going to get to 20,000 square feet. Because it's more difficult to reasonably, to say reasonably that you're regulating, you know, setbacks, volume, all that stuff. If you can't even see it from the road and it's a quarter mile from the neighbor, you know, those kind of problems that you then run into. It's, you can get in the weeds of regulating somebody who doesn't need to be regulated. And I think when you talk about mansionization, if somebody, you know, sounds funny, if you're watching this old house this season, that's a mansion.
Everybody should be.
Concern, but it's, the person doesn't have a neighbor. So it's hard to say them quadrupling the size of their 1880s cape really impacts what we're talking about.
The environmental impact, though. There is an environmental.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm just talking about from the, the sheer perspective of the mansionization impact, not that this is.
But mansionization, one of the mansion, one of the reasons we care about mansionization is environmental. So that does go
I agree.
besides on the other lots. So I just wanted to put that in there because.
And then, then the, then you, I think we do get much more into that discussion of reasonableness that, that was coming, that, that was coming from town council. I, and I guess it would be interesting to see how that play, in other words, if we're regulating something other than the, the principles that were outlined, Kristen, you were ticking them off of, of what's the appropriate purpose of a floor area ratio regulation? Right? If, if, if our underlying.
Yeah, was to limit intensity of land use and regulate building density. And that's definitely, you know, what our goals have been all, but you know, all along, particularly about, you know, sustainability, environmental impact, in addition to preserving town character.
I think another.
I'm not, but I'm not sure environmental impact is, is part of the zoning act.
What about, what about, right, you know, limiting intensity of land use?
So I, I, I think you can, you could probably make that, that case. You know, a 40,000 square foot lot. Currently a 10,800 square foot home on a 40,000 square foot lot is, you know, a pretty intense land use. So I, I, while I understand Andrew's point, I think, I think you can, under the, you know, just reasonable. You know, when you look at, you know, the floor area ratio, but, but it's, it's all of the structures. So if somebody has an 80,000 square foot lot and they have 6,000 square foot home and a couple, you know, a barn and a riding rink because they have horses. And so yes, somebody has a larger, has a larger lot. Most of the time they, they, they do have, you know, they do use their property in a more intense way, you know, for different reasons. So you have to understand the, the floor area ratio is not just the dwelling.
Yeah. And could you, it's a good point, Elizabeth. Can you, so that includes outbuildings like barns? It just, it doesn't include, I mean, I know there are some exclusions like decks and, and things like that, but it would include a barn.
So I can, I can read it first.
Yeah.
It's a problem with reformatting the bylaw. Now I, I can't, even I can't find anything.
What were you looking for?
The the.
R includes. Okay.
Yeah, six, yeah, six, two, 13. It's the total gross floor, floor area of all buildings on the lot. And the exclusions are in residential district. It's our basements, open and screened porches, decks and accessory structures with no permanent foundation or less than 100 square feet.
No permanent foundation or less than, wow, okay. So it would include a lot of outbuildings.
Correct.
I mean, I think in my mind, we've been, I mean, we've been targeting the mansionization transforming neighborhood character. And we, we looked at the numbers as they were previously, and there were a few projects were bumping into it. These numbers would just seem like a, a big ratchet down to me. I think that there's very few houses today that including the living area and garage are 1,950 square feet. And I think there's very few people who have 80,000 square foot properties that would want to be limited to 5,700. And, and so what I, I, I just think at the town meeting, this wouldn't be, the, these numbers wouldn't be deemed to be reasonable by the town.
I think the first three seem reasonable. I agree though, that the second bottom two, like I, I feel the same way, like whatever, you know, you have an 8,000 square foot lot, like do what you want, but it's, it's probably not going to ruin any character that, that probably doesn't exist here already. But I think the first three are very reasonable. Cause like everybody, anything that's especially new construction these days is going to have a finished basement on, on top of that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, I live in what most people would consider like a little tiny pocket house, community house. And, and I wouldn't fit under that, 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 that first level. If you include the garage.
Anyone who was considering an accessory dwelling unit or making a duplex of their home is going to have to think twice in terms of running up against these limits.
I agree. And I do think we need to talk about that piece, but as far as like a single family. I, you know, these are again, based on benchmarks that Kate and.
But it, but it isn't just the single family dwelling. So to Linda's point, 2,700 square feet in, in a 20, on a 20,000 square foot lot would not, nobody's going to do a two family.
Well, yeah, but that's on a special permit anyways. So they could ask for more. I mean, I don't know if it's possible or not, but I I was thinking we would just like say, two families are excluded from this.
No, they, they can't ask for more without a variance. And there would be, there, there would be no grounds to grant a variance to the FAR.
But can we not make two families and accessory dwelling units like exempt from FAR?
I, I am, I am not going to go into that discussion with only three meetings left till the warrant closes. That, that's one of those. I, I couldn't tell you what the, if they're, if or what the unintended consequences of that would be.
Well, there's special permits though, so two families.
I think we'd have to make an exception. We, we'd have to make separate FARs for if we were doing accessory dwellings and two families. Cause Linda, you're absolutely right. This goes against our policy of trying to encourage those. So we'd have to come with the, I think the only thing to think of is coming up the separate FAR.
Or under the accessory dwelling and two family, you, you put a provision that it's, you know, that square footage is exempt from the floor area ratio. I wouldn't.
Sorry.
I wouldn't put that in the floor area ratio side.
Okay.
Because and, and the, for accessory dwelling, you know, it's 750 square feet. I don't, I don't think that's significant or a significant change to, you know, floor area ratio. You know, if somebody wants to do an accessory dwelling. The other is a special permit is 1,000 square feet. So even if it's exempt from the floor area ratio requirement. It, it's still a special permit and they have to find that it's, you know, compatible with the neighborhood. For the two family, again, it's a special permit. And even if it's exempt from the floor area ratio, the Board of Appeals still has to issue a special permit and find it's, you know, compatible with the neighborhood. Exempting a two family does make the, the process that the Board of Appeals has to go through more, you know, more challenging as far as them making their findings. And, and again, without thinking about this a little bit more, I, I can't tell you what the other unintended consequences would be.
But yeah, I, I don't know. I'd say there are unintended or intended consequences by not, by continuing to not do nothing because we're afraid unintended consequences.
If, if I can, a couple of observations, I was just plugging in some numbers. So the change here using this formula would reduce what you could build on a 5,000 square foot lot by about 20%, 10,000 by about 40% and so on and so forth, until it looks, I didn't do this calculation, but eyeballing it for an 80,000 square foot lot, it reduces it by about 70%, right? That's a really big change. And I, I know that we think that the FAR as currently implemented isn't really making it a difference. Here's anecdote, you know, just, just a small, a small thing. I, I go to the gym every day with an architect who is he does a lot of projects in town. And I told him, we were looking at the FAR and he said, you're going to lower it that, that, he said that played into every project he does. And maybe he was overstating it and, but it, it's, it, it, he says he's, he's constantly having to design with a FAR in mind now.
Doesn't support the data we have.
Well.
Well, then finish, finish your thought Burton, and then I have a comment too.
Yeah. So, so maybe we'll be, we don't have more projects that are going, you know, we, we looked at some, some projects that were right up against the limit, but maybe some houses, you know, are being designed significantly, you know, a fair bit more below the limit, but still with a FAR having an impact. I just think, and I appreciate.
Contributing to mansionization.
No, I think he's doing work for his clients. But, and you know, that's one person's, that's one person's feedback that I, but I just think that reducing by these numbers will, I mean, I, I don't think it would be get past a town meeting. I, I, you, a 50, a 5,700 square foot of, of, of space on an 80,000 foot lot where you are likely to have somebody to have a detached garage or barn building, perhaps, you know, a pool house, a, a pool house, things like that. I mean.
They have their Ferraris, man.
Well, I understand.
There's no problem with that. I, I mean, listen, you know, they, they, they spend a lot of money for their property, right? I, I.
Pay a lot in taxes.
My, my brother lives in an 8,000 square foot house and I, I think he's crazy and he loves my little tiny house, but that's his right, you know?
Here's my only concern. I, I hear what you're saying. I think, I think we're all kind of looking at this. I, I think which is good. We've got kind of diverse perspectives on the board and that's important. I I I think which is good. We've got kind of diverse perspectives on the board, and that's important, I think, to kind of capture. You know, what might potentially be a good path forward. I I guess I'm always curious about. Why we're so concerned about limiting the size when there didn't seem to be any concern about like, oh, my gosh. Look at what a larger percentage of square footage and and bulk the houses are now compared to before. Right? It was, was it not alarming? It clearly was alarming. That's why people looked at this. Um, and so it's like now we're trying to rein things in. And so it just feels silly that we didn't say, oh, what's a reasonable size of increase of the average size of Home and Concord? Is, you know, is fifty percent increase? Okay, then the houses that are, you know, four thousand square feet, that would be really big. That's all. I feel like. We're looking at it from like. Uh, well, now that all the houses are six thousand square feet, yeah, we can't possibly lower it, when before, they were not that big. They were not that big like ten, a decade ago.
I I'm looking at these numbers and and I have a different perspective than Burton, because I'm not even convinced that my house that was built in nineteen sixty seven. Could fit based on the FAR. I I think it's too large and and it. Fits in the neighborhood, but you know, once you start including the garage and and all these other living spaces. I'd be terrified as a homeowner if somebody came in and said, oh, well, your existing home can't even fit in this. And, you know, because the math, you know, people are gonna look at that and say, okay, my house is on a. You know, a thirty thousand square foot lot. So I'm I'm not great at math, so I'm having, you know, I'm a lawyer by trade. I I tend to shy away from the numbers. Um, but when you look at numbers that don't fit evenly in these categories, it starts to really, you know, because I think a thirty thousand square foot lot would end up hitting. Which number? Is it the, is it the forty thousand square foot multiplier? Or is it the twenty thousand?
No, no, so it it. This is.
If it exceeds it, it goes to the smaller multiplier, right?
Um, so. This column right here is is, that's just a benchmark. It it's not part of the calculation. So this is the calculation. So whatever the lot area is. Is is your multiplier. So, you know, seventeen hundred divided by thirty thousand square.
Oh, okay, I see.
Plus point oh five.
Elizabeth, so I think I think you'd have significant pushback with numbers that are this restrictive. Um, you know, because if you're saying that the average size, you know.
Correct.
Are they more aggressive?
No, they're, it's the exact same formula.
I don't know, maybe I just didn't think about when it got bigger. For ten thousand square feet doesn't seem bad to me, but it starts to seem really bad when you're starting to regulate.
Uh, Elizabeth, can I share my screen? I don't know if I know how.
Um, it's the, it's the little green. So you you have the document up on your screen. Yep. Yeah, so, yep, there you go.
Can you guys see this table? Okay, so Burton, this is a table we went over at the last meeting, and this, I actually went through and calculated. If we applied this current FAR to the homes that were built between. Two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty, what would the impact be? So this kind of, this shows you a little bit on, this gives you an idea of. How much over that FAR, people are actually building homes on different size lots. So on. You can see the greatest impact is on forty to eighty, and that's actually, so. Uh, should I walk through the table or? So if you start with this first category, less than ten thousand, there was two homes built in that ca- category. The average square footage. Of that we're using for FAR in that category is two thousand six hundred fifty seven. Both of those homes would be captured in this new FAR, and the average square foot impact is six hundred and five. Square feet, meaning the overage is six hundred, on average, between those two homes is six hundred and five square feet.
Okay. That that the number is the difference between what you propose as a limit and the average size of what's getting built.
Exactly, for each of these categories.
Okay.
So kind of give you an idea of how how much bigger people are going than the category that we're setting. In each, in each category, um, but it also, you know, depends on the sample size too, but, oh, and this shows you.
So just just to put some numbers around this, though, right, that if it's a six hundred and five square foot impact, using a relatively conservative price per. For for homes in Concord of around four hundred dollars, right, so six hundred and five times four hundred is a quarter million dollars. And I I think that people will respond viscerally to that, right? Realtors, developers, homeowners who might be sitting in a small, small nineteen fifties Cape that they love and they love the neighborhood, but they they. They need to a- afford buy-in into an assisted living facility because they're older. Right, that that those are, that's a pretty big number, and when you go get in a bigger. Um, you know, I, well, you don't, I don't need to do the math, you're getting up to three quarters of a million dollars for the forty thousand square foot lots.
And and but see, I disagree that. That we need to quantify a a loss. You know, based on the size of the home that could be built on there.
Uh, yeah, I'm not saying, I I'm not saying that that's, this should be how with a formula we should use per se, but I think that. Uh, it gives us some sort of ballpark ideas, I I would think in terms of the hit.
Let the town decide. I mean, I don't know, like, what else can we do here? We're still part of our long range plan is to. Preserve neighborhood character and try to solve mansionization.
Haley, I'm with you. I I think ultimately, yeah, let the town decide. I, but I suspect these numbers would be uh 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 too far for the town. I think i- if our goal is to, if our goal is to ratchet down the FAR because the existing FAR is not really having an impact, I'd say. Notch it down a couple notches, not three or four notches, right? Um, that's that's my input, but. I'm not the one that's been really uh working with these numbers a lot. I missed the last meeting's discussion. Um, I I just think that this, this one is not likely to to go.
So, do you want to have any public comment about that?
Uh, yeah, well, I said we'd do it at the end, um, but uh maybe i- if if the board is. We we might have some, we might have some people with with, uh. You know, realtors or folks that have a good idea.
I, yeah, so you have public comment at the end and um and you stated previously. Um, and and I really would like to get through. The accessory dwelling unit and the minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Just sorry, can I ask one last question? I mean, we still will have a public hearing on anything we're proposing, right?
Yes.
So you will, you will have three more meetings. To draft your warrant articles, and then should you decide to submit a warrant article, then you will have. A a public hearing where um you take the input and then if. If the board after that input wants to modify your warrant article, um, you can. You can do that at town meeting. Um, you can modify it to make it less restrictive. Uh, you could not modify it to make it more restrictive.
So in this case, we could have put a lower limit and raise that limit.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, with that in mind, I think then that probably would suggest we, you we, you know. Based upon the the sense I'm getting from the board, that do we think a a a significantly tighter FAR makes sense that we would go forward with some number? Um, I I I just ask people to consider that maybe, maybe this could be, you know. A multiple step process is basically like the just last discussion we had that, you know, the zoning code is not set in stone. But we would err on the side of being restrictive so that we could lessen it, if that was the feedback we got at the public meeting. Linda, you're shaking your head, so.
I I I don't personally uh see that as a good stra- strategy. Um, I think. FAR is a complex enough. Uh, concept for people and all of these numbers, um, not everyone at town meeting really loves numbers. And so I think that if you go in and then say, oh, this is what we really believe in. And but by the way, we have in our back pocket a different set of numbers that if you guys don't really like it, we'd. Be happy to substitute it. I I I think that that would um. Uh, not speak well for how much thought we've put into this process, and I think that. It would be a very confusing um approach to present to a lot of people where you don't have the. Six minutes to explain the whole thing to them. So I I wouldn't go forward with that strategy. Um, I would go forward with. Um, what we can support, and I I'm not quite sure. That I've heard a lot that really. Gives great support to any set of numbers. Uh, I mean, I I think we saw what Kate showed last time. But I, and and also what Kristen showed in terms of um. Comps acro- across Massachusetts, but I I really don't feel that. That these numbers that we have um can can stand on their own to a lot of scrutiny, and I I. I've personally feel that um this the strategy and and where we are. Um, I would like to see a little bit more work, so we. We feel we've given it our best shot.
Uh, and just to clarify one thing, I was talking about electing to um make them. Less restrictive following the feedback from the public forum. Yes.
Yes, yes, I I I certainly think um we should listen closely to whatever comes out of the public hearing, yes.
So what I. A public hearing says like, oh, this, this is horrible, like, we end up dropping it.
Um, so what I can also do is, um. You know, I can get feedback from, you know. Now, and let's say the the meeting, you know, the first meeting in January. Um, from, you know, different builders and different, um, you know, different groups. And and then in in January, um, you. Can have, you know, the current proposal that you just looked at and something in between what we have now and the current proposal, and the board can. You know, continue its discussion for. Those meetings.
Can we get data from, are there other towns that have FARs and can we get? Data like from Weston and say like, oh, this is what. The numbers in Weston look like, um.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that would, that would work, because it's um. It just how. The data that, you know, this is being based on is so specific to Concord. Um, and there are other communities that have floor ratios, but um they. Their calculation goes in a, you know, completely different direction. You know, and and some are are. You think this is complicated, some of them are, you know, beyond anybody's comprehension, so. Um, I I don't think you could do an apples to apples comparison.
Thank you.
Okay, so we want to be able to put forward a FAR proposal. Um, we uh, we haven't talked about whether. These numbers, I I don't have a consensus, Linda, or. Sense whether people are, the board is generally in support of these types, these numbers, or they want tighter numbers or less restrictive numbers. I've said I think that we, that the number should be less restrictive. Um, do we, do we, what's the sense of the board? Should we be revisiting these numbers or proceeding and and seeking feedback at the at the public hearing?
I don't think we should go forward with these numbers, it's, the impact is too big. And I realize that I made them.
You also keyed off a really good discussion on them, so it's appreciated.
I think it's too much, so I don't know if there's like a compromise in between where we are now and. Existing FAR, maybe that's where we need to go. Especially on those larger lots. It's just the shock value of it, it's just. I'm also willing to discuss um. In different numbers, but the way that Kate started out for that was with actual data. And so rather than kind of taking a stab, what do we think is too large or not? That puts us, I think, in the way too subjective category as opposed to saying. These are the averages, this is where people are living right now, and I mean, ideally, I would love to say. That this was the average size of the, in of ho- the home in Concord. Clearly, it's been reasonable for, you know. Couple hundred years, several hundred years, so. Like, I I just, I don't want to keep stabbing in the dark and saying, well, I think this is gonna pass. I want to say, this is kind of the uh. Way we want to look at land use intensity and, um, you know, this is, this is where we're deriving these, these numbers from.
Yeah, I'm happy to do some more research, research, uh, Kristen, we can, we can talk offline and just keep iterating, maybe. Up in the next few meetings, but I think like, I I think everybody agrees to. Proceed with it. It's just a question of what the numbers are gonna end up being, which will be an easy, like, swap out or whatever, hopefully.
So can I just remind everyone what the board did that passed it in the first place? They looked at. There was like a subset of homes that sort of everyone kept coming up as being examples of mansionization that they did not. Want that they agreed was too much, and that's how they did it. So I mean, as, because we we simply have not come up with a way of. Setting these numbers, and so I mean, that's at least one option because it worked for them. So we could go back and do that and collect examples, but it's still like. Not great. Kristen, I think the problem with. I totally agree with what you just said, like, at least that data that we had was data from. Massachusetts and the country, but I think Concord homes are in general much larger. Because we're a wealthier community.
But they didn't have to be, like, I mean.
But people still, but people still have their private property that. Um, is the way it works. Um, so I. I don't know. It's tough. I feel a little bit stuck.
You could look at the um, the old man's and orchard house and the thorough house and.
That's interesting.
I want to go back and say, well, what are the Concord houses that are iconic and they're all pretty big.
That's interesting. And they all housed eight people. That's right. Ours now housed two each, but I mean, I I think I'm I'm willing to kind of like, you know, think about it from that perspective as well. But I'm also not willing to, you know, sacrifice town character so that other people can move in. If other people want. An an affluent, you know, suburb that with larger houses, and we can't offer them that. I'm comfortable with them finding another neighborhood where they can. The condo, you don't, like, if the condo that you want to live in downsized too, doesn't exist here, you might have to go to me, like, somewhere else. But but you, but that's, you're talking about somebody who's already in town. I'm talking about attracting residents from out of Concord. And like, that's not what I feel like we're in the business to do, where I feel like we're trying to serve, you know, current residents.
Yeah, but to Burton's point, uh, people who. Live in the Cape now and are down, you know, want to sell their property to the developer who's the highest bidder, that it does impact them, but.
Yeah, and again, I don't, I don't. Sorry, all right. But this is good, I find it really good discussion, and it really is helpful that we have a variety of perspectives on the board.
I don't know if I have it in me, another round of numbers, guys. You guys, I don't know. Do you think that we might actually get there with this next round?
Did did we say that we didn't want to do? I thought originally we were talking about kind of a sliding scale that said, you know, um. Or or are we trying to, for the ease of implementation, keep.
or or are we trying to, for the ease of implementation, keep just one FAR formula?
To sliding, um, no, that we went to one formula, it is more simple, but um, also
So the discussion, this discussion around that um, is a a a the only way you could have a sliding scale is based on the zone district and um, that that is not an accurate representation of existing properties in different zone districts. There there are some, you know, twenty thousand square foot lots in Residence C. There are, you know, there are some eight thousand square foot lots in in Residence B. So the the sliding scale by zone district doesn't work.
Okay.
Good night, Kate. I'm happy to take a stab at it. I know I was trying to stay out of it, but if you don't want to do the Excel anymore, I'm happy to shoot some back. Now we're Caitlin.
Where'd she go? I think she was so happy that you volunteered, she just said, I'm done for the night.
Uh, and I also think she was expressing that she's been, uh, that she's been buried under these numbers for a while. I think that would be great, Haley. I I I think this discussion needs to continue on. I mean, eh, for for my feedback, just at a really high level is I wonder what the shape of that curve should be like based upon what what the goal, the goal is. I I my my focus is on those 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 night post-war subdivisions that are going away or or being replaced. And then the and then the overall, the the overall number and 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 I'm I want to be clear that I'm not opposed to tightening the FAR, um, far from it. What I want to find is a good number that has a supportive town. Um, so Haley, if you would take another look at those numbers, that would be really great. Elizabeth, the other item, you you said the minutes, but the there was there any other substantive items that you need us to get through this evening? As we're coming up on ten o'clock?
Yes, the accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Okay. Accessory dwelling units.
Um, so if you want, I can uh, hang on. So this was from the agenda memo, which I'm sure everybody read. Um, and just the issue that the building commissioner and I are coming up with the previous special permits that were issued for accessory dwelling units before the amendment in twenty twenty. And and I think that's probably Kate. Um, and one way to deal with that is amending the accessory dwelling unit by law uh, to basically have a, you know, grandfathered provision. And, yep. This right, this last paragraph is just my my first idea of formulating that grandfather provision. And I would definitely um, get input from town council. These items A, B, G, that's an L, um, that's based on, and I was able to I was able to um, pull together quickly um, a comparison chart of existing previous, you know, prior to town meeting and afterwards. And um, this, so this chart goes through and tells you what the what the existing, the previous bylaw was and what the current bylaw now allows and what the conflict, you know, where there are conflicts. Um, and so that's and I'll I'll send this around to the board as well. So that's where in my first idea about drafting that grandfather project provision, where these items, you know, came from. So, you know, and I should number these. This is item A, B. Um, and I can go down and relate those to um, the bylaw. But that's where you get um, you know, where those conflicts come from.
Elizabeth, isn't the 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 basic thing here that if you got a special permit under the prior bylaw, it's not transferable with a change of ownership?
Uh, well, so that's, that's one of the items. But previously, um, there was no uh, square footage limit. So somebody may have a, you know, the the Board of Appeals had to make the finding about, you know, as far as, you know, whether it was detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, but there there was no square footage. So you could have, you know, an eleven hundred square foot ADU. Um, but the other pro, the other significant provision is that um, the special permit expired upon the sale, which is no longer.
And the isn't the problem, so the those ones that were built without a square footage limitation, those went through zoning board review, they're they built, they're done. Isn't just the 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 problem then for the people that have them is that it's not transferable?
Correct.
Okay, so in principle, uh, you're asking us, now that we're in, we we're supportive of accessory dwelling units and more comfortable with them as codified in our zoning bylaw, are we comfortable with those special permits that were granted? There's limited number of special permits that were granted for accessory dwelling units prior to the new bylaw becoming permanent effectively?
I both, yes, and I believe there's, um, I think the number is fifty-two.
Fifty-two, okay. I mean, I I, do you know with the original rationale why they were not transferable? Was that and and when I say transferable, they still have to be transferred with the primary residence. But they, if you sell the primary residents, they're not, the the special permit expires. Is that the case?
If you, if you sell the property, yes, it ex- it expired. And the new property owner, which happened a few times before the bylaw was amended, they would come in and they would, they would just get a new special permit.
Yeah. I mean, I don't even understand what the the rationale was there, cuz you're not gonna tear down the the accessory dwelling unit. I guess he just means you have to have a, what, a family member live in it, right?
I I I don't know what the rationale was.
Well, I would, I would fully support effectively making those so that they don't, that so that they're 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 transferable, so that they they they're permanent and they they flow with ownership of the property. That's my view. Anybody else on the board? Do differently, have a different opinion on that? I mean, it is kind, it seems to me it re- in, it's hazard an absurd result. We're not gonna we're not gonna require, I mean, what if somebody doesn't get their special permit renewed? And it's just an administrative procedure and cost to get it today. So that would be a great amendment, in my opinion. And I hear no, so Elizabeth, you need to know from us tonight if this is something we want to push forward for uh, AGM twenty twenty-two? Or ATM, what what do we call it? The annual town meeting?
Yes.
If if you think there are no unintended consequences, then yes, I am. I am all for that. I just want to be careful. We're not doing something to just meet the needs of a few that's gonna end up being more comp- like, complicated.
Well, it's it's fifty-two or less.
Fifty-two or less. I think the original thing was probably great wariness about allowing accessory dwelling units. But they were, and and yeah, there weren't these size restrictions, but each and every one was looked at by the zoning board. They're already built, they're already there. Grandfathering them isn't going to allow all of a sudden houses with to build new accessory dwelling units that don't fit within the size limitations we put in place. Um, it's, honestly, I'm surprised that that the special permit would be revocable upon a cha- change, transfer of ownership, but a maintenance of the same use. Okay. Elizabeth, do you have what you need from us on this?
Uh, yep, I will, I will draft something.
All right. Um, that sends us to minutes. I had big hopes of reading all of the minutes until my day went completely sideways on me. I've got through the uh, draft October twelfth minutes that had Kristen's comments, edits already in them. Um, I, let's start with these. We'll go through these one at a time. Does anybody have any further comments to the October twelfth minutes?
Um, I think I s- I sent in a couple of um, typos for October twelve. Do I need to go through those?
No, not not typos, no.
Fine.
Okay. Um, with no other comments, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the planning board for October twelfth? I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the minutes of October twelfth. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. I'll I'll give that to Andrew. Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Did we get Kate back?
Yes.
Hey, Kate, uh, how do you vote? Oh, you're, yeah, that I mean, yes, as well. Okay. That takes us, thank you all. That takes us to the minutes of October twenty-sixth, which I've already confessed. I did not have the chance to review, but did anybody else have comments?
No.
Great. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of October twenty-sixth as drafted. Um, may I have a second?
One second again.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
To prove, thank you. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. I think we've got one more. Um, the minutes of, they come separately. They did come separately, right? They came uh, earlier today.
Yes, November ninth.
Okay, um, the, any comments on the minutes for November ninth that we received today? If if on these, since we got them today, if nobody had a chance to go through them, we can defer these to a a future meeting. I'm sorry, Elizabeth, you don't want to hear me say that, but
No, no, that's fine. I just don't want three sets of minutes out there.
Yeah. I think we do a pretty good job. I look at some of the other boards, it take a long time, but
No, you guys are great. I attribute that to Nancy, though.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy. Where all credit is due. Um, does does anybody feel like they they haven't read these that they would might provide feedback in a future uh, review? Okay, then I'm gonna make, go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes of November, the planning board minutes of November ninth. May I have a second for that?
I'll second again.
Thank you, Andrew. Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kate? Kate?
Kate's video failed again.
Oh, okay. All right, Haley?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that's a vote of of uh, everybody but Kate on those, on that one, if you could reflect that, Nancy. All right, I think then that brings us to um, staff and board updates. Am I correct on that?
Um, I I at ten o'clock, I have nothing to add.
Okay. Um, I will just quickly say uh, that the CPC is in its deliberative process reviewing um, a many interesting um, uh, propo- requests for funding. So a lot going on there. I probably the one that's getting the most focus just at this minute is a proposal to purchase land for potential conservation and potential affordable housing unit use in in West Concord. Um, it would be a very significant acquisition for the town. Lots of input is is flooding in from people in the neighborhood and otherwise. Um, and uh, I know all sorts of other projects, but that's the one that's got a lot of focus right now. The decision-making process proceeds through December when we finalize the the list. Anybody has any questions? I'm happy to talk CPC anytime. All right, with that, uh, I'd like to ask that we have um, any public comment for people that have hung on. Um, it is awfully late, um, and I respect everybody's time for sticking with us as this planning board works through with the various items we've got to work through. I'd say if you've got public comment on um, the um, the uh, the scenic byways, uh, the scenic roads measure, that that we haven't looked at that before. So everything's everything's welcome as with respect to the Thorough Depot. I'd ask, you know, uh, we've we've had a lot of meetings. If if you provide a comment before, um, we appreciate it. Please limit comments to new comments, or of course, there's the forum um, that we will be having specifically for that purpose. Um, I see a couple of hands. I'd like to, I Daniel Stapleton, I see your hand raised. If you unmute yourself, identify your name and um, uh, address, please.
Yeah, uh, Dan Stapleton on twenty Conan Street in West Concord. Just a a comment on the FAR part of the meeting.
Yes, please.
So um, living in on Conan Street is kind of the epicenter of the FAR.
Yeah, it is.
Because uh, I think two-thirds of our street has been demolished and is in the process of being rebuilt. And I think that um, as a citizen, it's a little bit hard to sort of understand the process. So my my comment is is really this, there's a quantitative FAR. And that's one way to look at it. And I and I probably would encourage that, that um, ratio being reduced. But then there's the process itself. And so, for example, we see um, proposed buildings achieving the FAR by reducing portions of the building footprint to six foot seven versus six foot eight. And that's how they're complying. So you, you really haven't met the intent. You're getting a very large volumetric density, but you're meeting the quantitative requirement. And as a citizen, unless you really dig into these developers' metals, you don't see that. And the other issue is, you know, maybe you guys could kind of think about like, how often are special permits approved? Because I I think a lot of the sort of, I I don't want to use the word abuse, cuz that's not a an appropriate term, but a lot of the sort of not achieving the goals of the FAR sometimes just comes out because we get a lot of special permits approved. So, you know, that's my comment.
Thank you very much, appreciate.
More than just a quantitative number.
Uh, so, um, Burton, just for um, background, uh, I believe the Board of Appeals has only issued three special permits to exceed the um, the max floor area ratio.
FAR.
Okay. And what about, do you have any insight on, let's say, first first floor, I I mean, a living space that has a, uh, that that's below, um, I I did, was the number six, seven?
Uh, yes, so, um, no, six, eight.
Six, eight.
So, um, the building commissioner has stated there have definitely been instances where um, a project comes through and they'll make the ceiling height of a garage, a closet six, seven, so it doesn't count in the gross floor area. That's that's part of the definition of gross floor area.
Wow. Yeah, it's a, but a closet space. Yeah, I mean, somebody's not, somebody's gonna say, I don't want that as living, real, actual living space, but it gets, it it has the same effect, it's footprint.
It, well, it's part of the gross floor area if it has a ceiling height greater um, six, eight or greater.
And I I probably Elizabeth, that one of the Conan houses in particular has been flagged by folks that that they're doing that right now.
Interesting. Um, that's a really good, I, it's not something I thought about. I I guess people will go to all links. Um, so thank you very much for raising that point. Um, if I may go to next in line, Carol Savoy. You could state your name and address, please.
Hi, it's Carol Savoy, sixty-one Belknap Street. Um, I had sent in a letter earlier to the planning board requesting ten minutes time to speak at the twelve fourteen row on public forum, as the planning board had a chance to consider that.
Uh, that was forwarded to me by Elizabeth. And the forum for the 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 forum, excuse me, uh, for for the public forum is that we will be providing a presentation and allowing all members of the public to comment equally. So no, we're not doing um, non-planning board presentations at the forum.
Okay. Um, and when were you planning on sending out notification to town residents about the forum on the fourteenth?
Elizabeth, can you speak to the notifications that are that are involved?
Yep, went out today. And then tomorrow, the Public Information Officer will do her, her end of the media blast. Um, and try and get something in the Concord Journal, but uh, uh, and then the posters will go up. and then the posters will go up and flyers will be done next week.
Okay, did, did it go out to all residents or just people in the Throw district area?
So there's absolutely no way I can send a postcard to every resident in Concord. So it went out to all property owners in the Throw district. It went out to, well, I can just send you the map, but it's.
That'd be great. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel for there's eighteen thousand people that live in Concord. How many people are going to be notified through the mailing piece, I guess?
Well, there might be eighteen thousand people that live in Concord, but there's, there's over six thousand property, well, yeah, six thousand property owners. It's forty cents to mail a postcard, so sadly, that is, that is not a budget that the Finance Committee has, you know, approved for the Planning Division. So I'll be happy to send you the map. It extends some residential neighborhoods beyond the Throw Depot district. But did I notify people in West Concord? No.
Okay, can you give me a rough idea of how many housing units in that area that you sent it out to?
Probably roughly seventy five.
Seventy five houses. Does, does that consider people living in the apartments, like Throw Gardens or things like that, or Concord Crossing? Or is it more, you know, single family homeowners versus apartment dwellers?
It's, it's property owners from the Assessor Data base.
So Elizabeth, let me, maybe this, this is an interesting series of questions, but what you've been doing is providing notification to people that are in the neighborhood and the butters in accordance with the town practices for notifying people of these kinds of changes through, through a public process like this, right?
So.
Is there anything special about this that we're, we're providing less notice to people than we would for a typical zoning proposal that's going before town meeting?
No, we are providing more notification. There, there is no, there's no set policy or requirement as far as zoning bylaw amendments. The, if, if a warrant article is placed on the warrant and the warrant goes to every household, that is notification. As the planning board has been discussing this for two years, there has been numerous notifications in very, lots of different ways. And we have expanded notification again for this public forum, so it's, it's not less, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Miss Mark White, you've got your hand raised.
Hi, Mark White, two thirty-three Independence Road. And for a full disclosure, I'm also the owner of Bentley Building Corp. Do quite a bit of building in town. On the FAR calculation, I'm assuming that would also apply to all existing homes. And because there's very few homes that I know of in town that would be non, that would be conforming with this new FAR calculation. So anyone that wanted to do a remodel would need to come in and just do a small addition, would need to come in and get a special permit?
Elizabeth, at what stage does some, would somebody need to get a, a, a special permit for remodel?
Um, if they, if a current house can, does not meet the
There's non-conforming.
The new proposal, then if, if, if the floor area ratio is amended and lowered and an existing house now does not meet that floor area ratio, then they are considered legally non-conforming and to Mark's question, that is correct. They would have to apply for a special permit to the zoning board of appeals to change, alter, or extend a non-conforming structure.
Okay. Mark, I'm good. Yeah, did you have a follow on?
One quick comment. If you wanted to get it more diversified in the opinions, I'd be willing to sit down with anybody and, and let them know what we're thinking as developers.
Thank, thank you very much, Mark, for that offer. And obviously, we, this is an ongoing discussion and we appreciate a diversity of opinions. I, we, I don't believe, we, I know, in fact, we don't currently have a developer on the planning board as we have in the past, so your, your opinion would be appreciated. And Haley, maybe, I don't know if you wanted to reach out to Mr. White in, in putting, pulling together those numbers. Or otherwise, Mr. White, if you wanted to.
You're muted, Haley.
Yeah, sorry about that. I stepped away for a second to go to the bathroom, so I admit I missed what just happened.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. White admitted a comment. He said, does, does a lot of home remodels in the area. I know from seeing, seeing your signs in construction, right, new houses probably. And we, he asked a question as to whether the lower FAR limits would make essentially existing homes in Concord non-conforming if they were larger. And that is the case. So if there, anybody who then had a non-conforming home wanted to do a remodel that involved any kind of expansion, then they would need to get a special permit. And he's got his views on that, which he would be willing to share as a, as Mark, he said, a diverse, a diversity of, a diverse opinion, maybe different than what you heard tonight. Okay. Mr. White, if I, could I trouble you to perhaps email Elizabeth so that she's got your email in case somebody wants to follow, follow up?
Elizabeth, Elizabeth has my contact.
I bet she does. Yeah, okay.
I do.
All right.
He's on the list.
Yep, thank you. And it's cut off on my screen, but it's Nancy Frizzell, and I can't see the last bit of your last name. If you've got your hand up, Frizzella Leo.
Good. Nancy Frizzella Lee, one, four, zero, Walden Street. I just, this is just a comment. I know the meeting's getting late, so I'll be really quick. I just learned about the Throw Depot proposal today. And I want you to know that I'm a fairly informed citizen. I participate in other meetings on other issues. So I think, you know, I just want you guys to think about, I, I, from the email that's, the person sent me, she emailed it to a lot of people and a lot of people were expressing concern and saying, you know, oh gosh, how did, why did I not know of this before? So I think, you know, and I realize that, you know, the planning, that there's been this, you know, that there's been a lot of thinking about this in the past, but I don't think people, most people have the time and just don't get that involved. And it's not that they're not interested. So I, this, this is such an important area and it's such a big area that's, that, and, and the changes could be significant. And I really am, there's an online petition which I signed today. I'm going to fully admit that. And I regret signing it because I, I tuned in tonight because I wanted to learn more about it and I am learning more about it. And I see that there are positives, great positives for it. I, I still have a lot of opposition, but so I, I think this idea that, you know, that it's been in the works for two years, so people should know, is not really great thinking towards the citizens of Concord. The Concord Journal is terrible right now, that there's not much news that's being published in there. So you, you can't, I get that and it's really gone downhill. You can't really learn very much from the Concord Journal. So I, I just feel like even though it is expensive to tell people, I think the more you tell people before that meeting, the more people will be better informed and there won't be so much strong opposition because they'll, they'll see that, you know, more of the benefits. I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to make that comment because I spent the whole evening listening to you. And I, I just also want to say, you guys are really working hard and I'm so impressed. This is like a working meeting and I'm so impressed with the way you guys have reasoned through all of these issues. You, you deal with a lot of difficult issues and I just really appreciate that. Thanks.
And thank you, Nancy, for those comments. They're very generous. I, if I may, just. If I may.
I'd be.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Just to respond to Nancy, you know, we have done a, and, and town staff has done a, 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 a big effort here. Kicking this off with receiving public input first. It is really difficult to get people out of their daily lives and, and doing something like attending a planning board meeting for three hours and twenty-two minutes, right? What I would say is, I'm glad that there's, then email went out and has got people maybe concerned and maybe they'll come to the public forum and, and they'll learn more and maybe they'll share those concerns with us and we'll have a better proposal, or maybe they'll, they'll, they'll walk away thinking we've done a good job. So tell your friends and neighbors. The more people, the better. And it's a hybrid meeting, so there's no limitations on capacity that I'm aware of. So it would be great if more and more people come out.
So. And you always want people to know they can sign up for notifications from the town. Notify me. So it's our little plug, do this every time so that citizens can take it upon themselves to be as informed as they can be.
Yeah, I know that. I'm a member of that too, but it, there's so many issues on, in town and some, you know, just like you, you're volunteers, it's hard to keep up. And I, this is just such an, this one is really, it's not only going to impact the people who live there. It's going to impact everyone because it's, you know, more shopping, more stores, more, and, and this, you know, Concord as a town as a whole. Everybody uses that site, especially Crosspiece, so it really impacts everyone.
Thank, thank you very much for that input. And, and we, we are proceeding as, 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 as as carefully as we can, keeping that in mind, that not everybody may, may be in the loop or may find out what they feel is too late in the process. Mr. Bader, if you could, you've got your hand up. If you could state your name and address, please.
Stefan Bader, Seven River Street. I just want to say in terms of the bonus or the concessions on the commuter parking, I would urge you to not reduce the affordable housing requirements in order to provide more commuter parking. I just that, that option under seven, eleven, five, four, I just have to go on record as being opposed to any reduction in affordable housing requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bader. Carol, you've, you've got your hand back up. You've got a quick comment. Welcome that.
Well, yeah, tonight you were talking about how the, the height and the new zoning, it, the thirty-eight feet is better than what is there now because of how you measure the pitched roof and some complicated formula. And I think Elizabeth said she was going to put something out on the website about that. I'd like a little bit more detail about that, on how that actually is, like, the new zoning is going to be beneficial and lower than what the old zoning is. It's still very unclear to me. And I think it's unclear to most people.
Okay, Elizabeth, will you be posting that, that hand sketch that the building inspector did on, to our site?
Yes, the Public Information Officer just created it so that you can actually, he did it on graph paper, so.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she created it so it can be posted.
Great.
And if you could do that, like for Thero Street, an example, like between priest cleaners and Concord provisions, like what would happen the before and after, just so we can kind of grasp so the, the benefit of this.
So it.
If there is one.
So it's, it's, it's not possible for me to.
The, the.
The building height is, is based on how, how wide a building is and the pitch that somebody chooses to to construct the project, you know, construct the building at. So you know, he, the building commissioner can give you a twenty-foot wide building and the different pitches, a forty-foot wide building. But I can't tell you, this is going to be the building between priest cleaners and Karma. I, but he, he can do, he can do an example for different widths of buildings for a pitched roof, but.
Yeah, that would be fine. That would be fine.
The, the shorter answer is that for a flat roof building, the limit is staying the same. For a pitched roof building today, it's measured, it's a calculation based upon the center point of the diagonal pitch of the roof. What we're saying is it will be a hard fixed line at the, at the, at the apex of the roof. And that's how it will be measured. So it's pretty easy, if you can imagine, if thirty-five feet is your, is your limiting line, when you turn it like this, you can get up to forty feet up there, or you could get up to forty-five feet. But if you say that your, your max limit is thirty-eight feet, it doesn't matter the pitch of the roof, it doesn't matter the width of the building, you're stuck at thirty-eight feet, right? So it's, it's just, it's just geometry. And that, and I take a look at the drawings Elizabeth will post, it makes it pretty clear.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that looks to be the last public comment. Thank you, everybody, for, for sticking with us. And we, I'm ready to adjourn unless anybody on the board has a objection.
Night.
Wonderful. Everybody have a lovely, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Linda. All right. Good night.